that are fueling and profiting from this war. Sudan is caught up in a proxy battle for its national resources and commodities. Numerous countries in the region and beyond are involved. Fourth, I urge everyone with influence to stand up for international law. That means advocating for an urgent referral by the Security Council of the situation in the entire country to the International Criminal Court. And it means making the arms embargo a reality, not only in Darfur but across the whole country. Sudan is built on the diversity of its people. The war is setting regions and communities against each other, ripping apart the social fabric with consequences that will reach down generations. I implore all parties to the conflict to put their country and its people first and to engage in meaningful peace negotiations, a humanitarian truce, and a transition to civilian, inclusive civilian rule. I urge them to fulfill their obligations on international law, to ensure the protection of civilians and the passage of humanitarian aid. Finally, I must issue another stark warning about surge in violence in Kordofan. All the signs are there: bombardments, blockades, people forced from their homes, a despicable disregard for civilian lives. Kordofan must not suffer the same fate as Darfur. International law must not be shredded before our eyes, and the suffering of the Sudanese people must end. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. I now give the floor to His Excellency Mr. Abad Yeng, Special Envoy for the African Union for the Prevention of Genocide and Other Mass Atrocities. He will be speaking on behalf of the Special Counsel of the United Nations for the Prevention of Genocide. Mr. Chalokabiani will also speak. That will be a video contribution.
It is with a profound sense of urgency and responsibility that we address this special session of the Human Rights Council on the crisis in and around Al Fashir, Sudan. I have the duty to deliver this joint statement on behalf of Chalokabiani, the UN Special Advisor for the Prevention of Genocide, and myself in my capacity as African Union Special Envoy for the Prevention of Genocide and Other Mass Atrocities. Today, the African Union and the United Nations stand united, bound by a longstanding partnership and a solemn duty to protect vulnerable populations from the scourge of violence and impunity. This is a humanitarian and human rights catastrophe unfolding before our eyes. The situation in Sudan, particularly in Al Fashir and the wider Darfur and Kordofan regions, has reached a critical and tragic juncture. Since the outbreak of conflict between the Sudan Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces in April 2023, the civilian population has endured unimaginable suffering. Over 14 million people have been forcibly displaced, more than 40,000 killed, and countless others subjected to summary executions, mass killings, abduction, torture, rape, and attacks on humanitarian workers. As the UN's Independent International Fact-Finding Mission for Sudan recently stated, "Amid the rising tide of hate speech and ethnically-driven violence and reprisal, we fear the darkest chapters of this conflict have yet to unfold." Survivors from Zamzam Camps south of Al Fashir have recounted being placed in disease-like conditions. As one investigator stated, "You kill, no food, no water, you don't allow access to humanitarian aid. So what you do want is to kill population." So it's very clear. The effect of this is really the crime against humanity of extermination. The deliberate starvation of civilians as a method of warfare, as seen in the besieged cities of Al Fashir and Kadugli, is expressly forbidden under Article 54 of the Additional Protocol I to the Geneva Convention. The African Union Peace and Security Council unequivocally condemned these atrocities, demanded an immediate ceasefire, and called for unrestricted humanitarian access. The Council stated, "Standing with the people of Al Fashir, who have suffered enough since May 2024 under siege by the paramilitary RSF, during which time they have been denied access to food and other social basic needs, which deeply offends and is against AU values and international human rights and international humanitarian law." And the UN Office on Genocide Prevention has warned, "The systematic targeting of non-Arab communities, the Fools, Zagawa, and Masalit in Darfur, by mass killings and sexual violence, including rape, by obstruction of humanitarian aid, thus creating conditions intending to cause death, and by destruction of homes, farms, health facilities, water points, and other livelihoods constitute strong indicators of deliberate intention to inflict conditions of life on these groups calculated to bring about their physical destruction in whole or in part." Indeed, the risk of genocide exists in Sudan. It is real, and it is growing every single day. Yet, we must go beyond condemnation. We call upon the international community to redouble efforts to silence the gun in Sudan through inclusive dialogue and robust diplomatic engagement, in line with the African Union's silencing the guns initiative and the UN Charter. Demand immediate end to flow of weapons and fighters to Sudan that is further and very directly contributing to the systematic targeting of specific identity groups and to the already desperate situation in the country. Ensure justice and accountability for all violations, addressing impunity at every level. Protect civilians and uphold humanitarian law, prioritizing access to lifesaving aid and the restoration of basic services. Support civil society and independent media, whose voices are essential for transparency, early warning, and prevention. Address the root causes of conflict, including discrimination, exclusion, and economic deprivation through inclusive governance and sustainable development. Ladies and gentlemen, to end, we urge all member states, regional organizations, and international actors to act decisively and collectively. The world must not stand by as atrocities unfold. Silence and inaction are complicity. Let this session mark a turning point, a rallying call to our shared humanity and duty. The people of Sudan deserve nothing less than our unwavering commitment to peace, dignity, and justice. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. I now give the floor to Mr. Surya Deva, the Chair of the Coordination Committee of Special Procedures. He will also be joining us by video.
President, Excellencies, and distinguished delegates, I have the honor of addressing the Human Rights Council today on behalf of the Coordination Committee of Special Procedures. We welcome the convening of this special session to address the human rights situation in and around Al Fashir amid the ongoing conflict in Sudan. Since the beginning of the conflict, the special procedures have raised the alarm through multiple communications and press releases, warning of widespread atrocities, massive displacement, and the catastrophic impact on civilians. For more than two years, the Sudanese people have endured the devastating consequences of a conflict marked by unrelenting violence, lawlessness, and disregard for international human rights and humanitarian law. We have received deeply disturbing reports of mass killings, summary executions, sexual violence, forced displacement, abductions, recruitment and use of children, destruction of vital infrastructure, and attacks on humanitarian workers. Mr. President, after 540 days of siege, the city of Al Fashir fell to the Rapid Support Forces on 23 October, making a new and horrific chapter in this tragedy. Reports indicate widespread atrocities during and after the takeover, including ethnically targeted killings of civilians and the use of gender-based violence against women and girls. Women have been raped in front of their relatives and detained for days in conditions amounting to torture. When the RSF entered shelters for displaced persons near Al Fashir University, they reported dislocated women and girls at gunpoint, gang raped at least 25 of them, and forced over 100 displaced families to flee amid gunfire. We are horrified by the scale and brutality of sexual violence being used as a deliberate strategy of domination and humiliation aimed at destroying communities. Mr. President, we are also deeply concerned by the reports of ethnically motivated summary executions of civilians in Al Fashir and by the confirmation of famine in Al Fashir and Kadugli, which will worsen the already catastrophic humanitarian situation. Sudan is now the epic center of the largest displacement of crises in the world, with more than 12 million people forced from their homes, including 8.6 million internally displaced persons and over 3 million refugees in neighboring countries. Camps for displaced people have been repeatedly attacked, resulting in the killing of hundreds of civilians, internally displaced persons, and are living in conditions that defy human dignity, often without shelter, healthcare, or education. This intensifying violence has far-reaching consequences beyond the Sudanese border. It fuels instability across the region and undermines the prospect for peace, sustainable development, and respect for human rights. Mr. President, the Coordination Committee joins the High Commissioner, the Designated Expert, and the Fact-Finding Mission on Sudan in condemning all violations and abuses committed by the parties to the conflict. We also echo the call in the recent press release issued by a group of manatees holders for an immediate cessation of hostilities, the production of civilians, and unimpeded humanitarian access. We urge the international community to use all means available to end the bloodshed, ensure the protection of civilians, establish the whereabouts of those disappeared, and hold accountable those responsible for these crimes. Silence or inaction in the face of such atrocities would be an abdiction of the duty we all share to uphold the rule of law and prevent further suffering. We also urge the international community to ensure that warring parties respect the laws of the war and safeguard in particular the rights of civilians. No effort must be spared to ensure humanitarian access. Mr. President, the Coordination Committee, and the broader system of special procedures stand ready to assist the Council, the High Commissioner, and all relevant actors in monitoring and responding to the human rights implication of this crisis. At this critical juncture, we must reaffirm the production of human rights and respect for international law as well as international humanitarian law as the foundation of lasting peace. The Sudanese people deserve no less. I thank you.
Thank you for your statement. I now give the floor to Madam Mona Rishwami, a member of the UN Independent International Fact-Finding Mission for Sudan. Madam, you have the floor.
Mr. President, High Commissioner, Excellencies, colleagues. Much of Al Fashir now is a crime scene. Since it fell into the hands of the Rapid Response Forces, our fact-finding mission has interviewed witnesses and collected evidence of unspeakable atrocities: deliberate killings, torture, rape, abduction for ransom, arbitrary detention, and enforced disappearances, all at a mass scale. A comprehensive investigation is required to establish the full picture, but what we already know is devastating. RSF turned Al Fashir University into a killing ground after thousands of exhausted and starving civilians sought shelter there. Those fleeing the Saudi hospital reported summary executions of medical staff and civilians. Survivors described bodies piling in the streets and in trenches dug in and around the city. Their accounts are corroborated by verified digital evidence, reinforcing the scale and gravity of these crimes. For 18 months, Al Fashir has been under siege. Its population bombarded and cut off from food, water, medicine, and humanitarian relief. Despite repeated warnings of war crimes and crimes against humanity, the worst case scenario has now materialized. Thousands of civilians remain missing, and only a few thousand have reached safety. We do not yet know whether they are too weak to leave or prevented from leaving, or whether they met an even worse fate. Some civilians who managed to escape told us they walked up to 60 kilometers without food or water to reach Tawila. At RSF checkpoints, women and men were subjected to invasive body searches, forced nudity, and interrogation about their ethnic and perceived affiliations. Verified videos show hundreds of men encircled by RSF fighters, beaten, forced to chant degrading slogans, and accused of supporting the rival's groups. Some verified videos show point-blank executions after the victims' ethnicity or affiliation with SAF or allied forces were suspected. Information gathered indicates that hundreds of women and girls were raped and gang raped along escape routes, including in public, without fear of precautions or accountability. In one video, a female RSF fighter is seen laughing and urging her fellow fighters to rape women. The ethnic, political, and gender patterns are stark. Men from specific ethnic groups are executed. Women and children dominate those who are raped, abducted, and displaced. These crimes are not hidden. They are filmed, circulated, and even glorified. They mirror what we previously investigated in other parts of Darfur and elsewhere, now perhaps on a larger and more brutal scale. We are currently investigating similar atrocities in Kurdistan, where civilians are encircled, aid is blocked, and starvation is beginning to emerge, risking another Al Fashir. The horrors unfolding are the direct result of decades of impunity. They can and must now be stopped. Those who back, finance, and arm this machinery of brutality have the power and the duty to hold it. States with influence bear particular responsibility. The individuals and entities behind these crimes must face justice. Two weeks ago, we presented our findings to the UN General Assembly and engaged with member states, including on Al Fashir. We were encouraged by the recognition that independent investigations create the factual foundation for action, connecting victims' suffering with broader mechanisms for peace and justice. The Sudanese people have endured unimaginable suffering in this ongoing conflict. What they now need, and what international law demands, is an end to the bloodshed, immediate protection, and a credible path to justice. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. I now give the floor to Madam Niemet Ahmedib, the President of Darfur's Women's Action Group, and this is a video message as well.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. As I speak to you, I am horrified, dismayed, and heartbroken to bring to you the plight of our people in Al Fashir today. In the last week of October, the Rapid Support Forces have taken control of Al Fashir, where Al Fashir witnessed the worst massacre that brought unspeakable suffering to the men, women, and children of Darfur, who have suffered long before this attack has taken place. We have seen systematically the Rapid Support Forces killing people, following people as they flee, setting people in rows, and shooting at them in masses. We have seen children have been hanged in trees with the Rapid Support Forces militia cheering up and celebrating, using degrading work, while these children, teenage, who have been hanged, screaming, crying, and begging for mercy for their life. People who have fled for their life have been killed. Women have been shot at and killed, leaving their children to wander around. Innocent children have been murdered precisely by the Rapid Support Forces. Credible sources confirm that uncountable number of women and girls have been raped. The Rapid Support Forces went into search, house after house, building after building, for those who have hide for their life, killing the men, torturing them, and raping women and girls. In an attack in a hospital, the Rapid Support Forces militia marched into this hospital, whereby 450 innocent patients were murdered, along with the medical staff and patient companions. Many more have been capped and prevented from fleeing. I have never seen perpetrators that so involved, so brutal, so cruel, that they kill the people and record themselves and broadcast it across the internet while cheering in celebration, bragging about it, saying, "Now that we have taken Al Fashir, we are going to change the name of Darfur into the land of Al Jenayt," which is a prominent name for Rizqar Arab who have been brutalizing our people. This has echoed the broadcasts that we have seen in Al Jenayna during the night of the mass exodus and the large-scale massacre that was witnessed in the eve of the killing of the governor of West Darfur. They prevent medical supply and humanitarian aid to be delivered into Al Fashir or the surrounding area, including Abu Shogh and Zamzam Camp. We further have seen the violation of international law and the systemic nature of uprooting the people of Darfur from their land by dismantling the camp. In Al Jenayna, they attacking the camps in Dalindi, and they attack the Abu Shogh camp until they empty the entire camp, dwelt by 400,000 people. And then they attack Zamzam Camp, where over 800,000 people have lived there, most of whom are the survivors of the 2003 Darfur genocide. And today, we have seen that in Al Fashir. They are intending to clear the land from its people. And we must not allow our leaders to condone or ignore genocide. Lack of accountability have emboldened the Rapid Support Forces. And their so-called leaders of the Tassies government that they created in exile, they are going around lobbying the international community, asking to be included in a negotiating table. Make no mistake, the Rapid Support Forces cannot bring peace to Sudan. Those who murder civilians, kill children, rape women, killing patients in their hospital bed, will never bring peace to Sudan, and they do not deserve to be a part of any peaceful settlement of Sudan. And I therefore urge this Council to uphold your obligation to the international law and hold this militia accountable. Our people in Al Fashir, despite the horror, they continue to show us that hope is possible and that we must not lose hope. And today, I have hope. By addressing you, I hope that you take note and take serious effective action that can end the suffering, restore dignity, and restore our confidence in our international institution. Thank you.
Thank you for that statement. As per our practice, we will begin by hearing from the delegations of the countries concerned. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Sudan as a country concerned. Excellency, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since the beginning of the rebellion by the terrorist militia, we have been warning many times that the wrong description of the conflict based on equating a militia with such a record of criminality with SAF, this wrong criteria in many statements and decisions is the main reason that turned this rebellion militia, a militia that is ignoring international humanitarian law, international law of human rights, and all other international instruments, and perpetrating all these atrocities. Is it normal to see someone who thinks that such a terrorist militia, a criminal terrorist militia, to be a part of any human entity? Was the international community expecting all these atrocities so that they are now calling to help and salvage Al Fashir? We were warning all over the UN fora, in Geneva, and in other places. We were calling for pressure on the rebel militia and the country that is sponsoring it by supporting it with military and strategic equipment, and I mean the UAE. Where were you when this militia was violating all international resolutions, including Security Council Resolution 2736, which called for lifting the siege on Al Fashir? They have stepped on this decision, and they engage in a siege for more than one year. The international community has been unable to take anything against this rebel militia or the sponsoring country. The result was the atrocities and the genocides that you have been witnessing. Mr. Chair, what is happening in Sudan is an existential war that is targeting a whole community and to replace it with other communities. You have seen how killing in Al Fashir is based on ethnicity and even on color and race. So how can you describe genocide if this is not a genocide? You have also followed how they have systematically targeted civilian infrastructures and civilians for two years and a half, and they have also targeted the mosque of Al Arga Mosque in Al Fashir. They have also invaded the maternity hospital and killed 460 patients and medical staff in the hospital. If this is not terrorism, how can you define terrorism? This criminal militia has violated all criteria of definition of a terrorist entity. How long will the international community wait before classifying this entity as a terrorist entity? Thank you.
Thank you for that statement. We'll now begin with a list of speakers. Let me remind you that speaking time is limited to 1 minute 30 seconds for all. List of speakers will close in 15 minutes. We'll begin with the list of speakers for member states of the Council. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom on behalf of a group of countries.
Thank you, Mr. President. This statement is on behalf of the core group of Sudan core group. Sudan is collapsing under a brutal, protracted war. Last month, the Council condemned the escalation of violence in and around Al Fashir and called upon all parties to protect civilians. These calls have been ignored and defied. The atrocities reported after the fall of Al Fashir to the Rapid Support Forces are horrific: summary executions, sexual violence, abductions. Over 89,000 civilians have fled the city, joining millions already displaced. This is not merely a human rights and humanitarian emergency, it is a threat to regional stability and a test of international resolve. The special session brings global attention to the horrors unfolding in Al Fashir. As the support for holding this session shows, staying silent is not an option. We urge this Council to support a strong resolution that condemns the atrocities, demands unfettered humanitarian access, and mandates an urgent inquiry by the Fact-Finding Mission. The Fact-Finding Mission's work is vital to document the truth and preserve the possibility of justice and reconciliation. The Council must deliver a clear message: impunity will not be tolerated, and the international community stands ready to act. This war must end. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Norway on behalf of a group of countries.
President, High Commissioner, on behalf of the Nordic and Baltic countries, I welcome this special session on the human rights situation in and around Al Fashir following the RSF takeover. The people of Sudan are living through a catastrophic humanitarian and human rights crisis. Civilians are suffering on an unimaginable scale. We are gravely alarmed by credible reports of indiscriminate violence and deliberate mass killings of innocent civilians in Al Fashir, including on the basis of ethnicity. We receive reports of torture and sexual and gender-based violence, as well as the use of starvation as a method of warfare. Such acts, if substantiated, may constitute war crimes and crimes against humanity. Those responsible must be held accountable, and we note the important role of the ICC in this regard. The violence must stop. We are concerned that human rights defenders and local aid groups are targeted. We strongly urge all parties to agree to an immediate truce or ceasefire. We strongly urge all parties to agree to an immediate truce or ceasefire and to uphold their obligations on international humanitarian law and human rights law. All external actors must end support to warring parties and respect the UN arms embargo. President, colleagues, the war must come to an end and give way for an inclusive political process towards democracy and civilian-led government for Sudan. We commend the Quad countries for their efforts to this end. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ghana on behalf of a group of African states.
Thank you, Mr. President. The African group has been closely monitoring the horrible development in Al Fashir, North Darfur, Sudan since the military takeover by the Rapid Support Forces, which has resulted in an unprecedented human right and humanitarian catastrophe. We express our strong and unwavering solidarity with civilians in Al Fashir, who have suffered enough since May twenty twenty-four under siege by the RSF and denied access to food and other basic social needs. These civilians have also been subjected to various kinds of violations and atrocities. The African group condemns in the strongest terms possible the criminal activities against the Sudanese civilians and the grave violations of human right and international humanitarian law perpetrated by the RSF and call on the leader of the RSF to uphold international humanitarian law. We strongly condemn any external interference in Sudan, which is fueling the Sudanese conflict in flagrant violation of all relevant AUPSCs and UN Security Council resolutions. We stress that there is no military solution to Sudan's crisis and urges all actors to engage in dialogue and commit to peaceful, inclusive political process. The African group reaffirms the need for a single coordinated international effort to resolve the crisis in Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union on behalf of a group of countries.
Mr. President, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the European Union. North Macedonia, Montenegro, Serbia, Albania, Liechtenstein, Moldova, Ukraine align themselves with this statement. The EU strongly condemns the ongoing conflict in Sudan and the RSF's takeover of Al Fashir. We are shocked by the credible reports of horrendous atrocities committed by the RSF. Violations must immediately stop and be investigated by the fact-finding mission. The EU remains committed to supporting accountability efforts. In this context, the work of the ICC is highly relevant. These atrocities top the long list of human rights violations and atrocities committed by SAF, RSF, and allied armed groups. All parties need to engage constructively in ceasefire negotiations. The EU urges external actors to immediately cease support to the warring parties and to comply with the UN arms embargo. The EU strongly urges all parties to uphold their obligations under international humanitarian law and human rights law. The EU will continue stepping up its humanitarian aid, which currently stands at more than two hundred and seventy million euros to Sudan and the neighboring countries. The EU will continue to engage also through the EU Special Representative for the Horn, including with an initiative on the protection of critical infrastructure, and strongly supports the vital role played by civil society actors. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Algeria on behalf of the group of Arab states.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Arab group condemns in the strongest terms the crimes committed against innocent civilians, including women and children, the elderly, in Al Fashir after the takeover of the RSF of this city in late October, after a long siege for two years, despite Resolution twenty-seven thirty-six. The group condemns the horrifying attacks against the Saudi maternity hospital in Al Fashir, which led to the fall of victims, patients, and medical staff. Perpetrators of these violations should be held accountable. In this context, the group calls for the implementation of the provisions of the Jeddah Declaration to protect civilians. The group welcomes the regional and international efforts on the way to reach a humanitarian truce, to have a permanent ceasefire. The group values the humanitarian assistance provided for the affected, and we call upon the international community to double these efforts in order to respond to the urgent needs to those who need it in Al Fashir nationwide. We renew that we stress the sovereignty, territorial integrity, and unity of the Sudan with no interference in its internal affairs and to keep its institutions without any collapse and through the formation of a civil government. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Pakistan on behalf of the OIC.
Thank you, Mr. President. The OIC group is deeply concerned over the recent developments in the Republic of Sudan and strongly condemns the grave humanitarian and human rights violations committed during the attacks carried out by RSF on the city of Al Fashir. The situation has resulted in a deteriorating humanitarian situation in the country. Millions of Sudanese, including women and children, are in urgent need of life-saving humanitarian support. The multifaceted crisis faced by the people of Sudan needs urgent attention. We urge the international community, including humanitarian organizations, to enhance their support and assistance programs. We also call upon these agencies to provide support to Sudan's neighboring countries, which are hosting a large number of people displaced due to the conflict. We welcome the efforts to bring peace and stability in the country. We call on all parties to guarantee the unimpeded delivery of humanitarian aid to those in need, exercise restraint, and take effective steps towards fully implementing the Jeddah Agreement of twenty twenty-three. We reaffirm our solidarity and stand by the people of Sudan during these challenging times and reiterate our support for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Kuwait.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will express ... is hampering due protection to civilians as per international humanitarian law. We reiterate the importance of protecting civilians, facilitating humanitarian access to those who deserve it without obstruction as per international relevant laws and rules. And as per the Jeddah Declaration of twenty twenty-three, we reiterate our support to international and regional efforts. The best way to find a solution to the Sudanese crisis is through an inclusive national dialogue and peaceful political solutions away from any mechanisms that do not enjoy the acceptance of the concerned country. And we reiterate our support to Sudan's sovereignty, territorial integrity, and independent national decisions. We call upon empowering UN mechanisms in Sudan in a constructive manner so as to support humanitarian efforts and response. We look forward to adopting a resolution by consensus that will send a clear and strong message by international community that reflects a unified position vis-à-vis the suffering of the Sudanese people and supports efforts to end violence and achieve peace and stability. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Qatar.
We stress our principled position. We support the unity, territorial integrity of the Sudan and the right of its people to enjoy living in peace, security, and dignity. We also care for the rights of the Sudanese people, and we reject any form of interference in the internal affairs of the Sudan, notably fueling the conflict. We are shocked, and we condemn the atrocities committed by the RSF in Al Fashir, and we call for an immediate end of these atrocities and holding perpetrators accountable. We renew our principled position. This war should end, and we need a peaceful solution to keep the unity of the Sudan and the institutions and its territorial integrity. It is time for the whole world to pay attention to this tragic humanitarian catastrophe and to work hard to end it. By the day we witness more atrocities and innocent civilians pay the price, just as we saw in and around Al Fashir, and we fear that this might be repeated in other regions and areas if we do not move to end that. We stress that we stand in solidarity with the Sudanese people at this critical juncture, and we will continue to provide all forms of support, and we call upon the international community to redouble efforts and to provide humanitarian assistance to meet the increasing urgent needs of the Sudanese people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Republic of Korea.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Republic of Korea deeply regrets, despite repeated concerns raised by the international community, including the council, the RSF's ongoing assault have driven Al Fashir and the surrounding areas into an acutely severe human rights and humanitarian crisis. We further deplore that this catastrophic situation continues to worsen across North Darfur and Kordofan. We strongly condemn the RSF's attacks against civilians, including attacks on health workers and hospitals, as well as reported large-scale atrocities such as ethnically motivated killings, summary executions, and sexual violence. All perpetrators of such human rights violations and abuses must be held accountable. We therefore support robust accountability measures, including through the fact-finding mission and the International Criminal Court. We once again urge all parties, particularly the RSF, to cease hostility to facilitate immediate and unhindered humanitarian access and to ensure the protection of civilians, including by allowing safe passage. This crisis demands more than repeated words. It requires concrete action. The Republic of Korea stands ready to actively engage with the international community to alleviate the suffering of the Sudanese people and to support efforts towards sustainable and lasting peace in Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Japan.
Thank you, Mr. President. We thank you for convening this special session. Japan remains deeply concerned about the worsening human rights and humanitarian situation in the Sudan, particularly in and around Al Fashir. We are appalled by the reports on hundreds of horrendous attacks, including summary executions, mass killings, attacks against humanitarian personnel, and forced displacement. Women and girls in particular are disproportionately at risk, especially as the last remaining maternity hospitals in Al Fashir have been destroyed and conflict-related sexual and gender-based violence continues unabated. Japan appreciates the important work of the fact-finding mission for the Sudan as the only UN investigative mandate for the country concerned. The FFM's work is now more vital than ever to ensuring accountability for the reported violations and abuse of human rights, as well as reported violations of international humanitarian law. Japan reiterates its call on all parties to the conflict to immediately cease the hostilities and uphold their obligations under international humanitarian law and human rights law. We urge all parties to guarantee immediate unconditional, safe, and unhindered humanitarian access to populations in need while protecting civilians and those placed oaths to combat. Japan remains committed to supporting Sudanese efforts toward an orderly transition to civilian rule in close cooperation with the international community, including through the work of its special envoy for the Horn of Africa. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Spain. Thank you. President Spain aligns with the EU statement. We express our outrage at the high level of violence perpetrated in Al Fashir by the RSF militia and their allies. We condemn in the strongest terms the grave violations of human rights and of IHL committed by the RSF, which could constitute war crimes, crimes against humanity. Those atrocities, which include widespread use of sexual and gender-based violence against women and girls, and a whole litany of violations that were referred to by the OHCR, have direct commitments but affect us and call on us all to act. We call for immediate ceasefire to avoid escalation of the conflict. We urge the parties to begin peace negotiations, to put an end to the war and end the suffering of an exhausted population, victim of the most serious humanitarian crisis in the world. We convey our support to the diplomatic work of the Quartet, and we urge them to redouble their efforts to reach a humanitarian truce, and a ceasefire is essential to guarantee accountability for the grave human rights violations committed. It's the only way to ensure justice and reparation for victims, stop the spiral of impunity which fuels cycles of violence, and move towards a just and sustainable peace. To do this, documentation of all human rights violations is necessary. This council, by holding this session and through the resolution that we support, is taking a necessary step in that direction. Thank you. Thank you. List of speakers now closed. I give the floor to distinguished representative of South Africa.
Thank you, Mr. President. My delegation aligns with the statement delivered by Ghana on behalf of the African group. South Africa condemns the mass atrocities committed by the RSF, deliberately targeting civilians and essential civilian infrastructure in and around Al Fashir, which constitute war crimes and may amount to crimes against humanity. South Africa shares the concerns recently expressed by the UN experts about the scale and brutality of these crimes, including the widespread and systemic levels of sexual violence as a deliberate strategy and a weapon of war. Sadly, this savagery is not new. Not only is the RSF the jungle weed of yesteryear, but loud warnings have been issued for months now about the risk of mass slaughter. We can therefore no longer afford to remain silent. This impunity must come to an end. Indeed, it is precisely such situations that the council's founding resolution mandated to address hence South Africa supported the convening of this session. Accordingly, we echo the AU's call for the RSF to be held accountable, together with external role players who aid and abet them in perpetrating these horrific crimes. We reaffirm our solidarity with the people of Sudan and call for a stop to the flow of arms. The guns must be silenced once and for all. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Algeria.
condemns the atrocities committed by the Rapid Support Forces during their assault on Al Fashir, following more than eighteen months of an inhuman siege marked by starvation, suffering, and despair. Reports of ethnically motivated killings, torture, summary executions, and sadistic sexual and gender-based violence are horrifying. Equally shocking are the videos of the RSF commanders calling on militiamen to rape women in North Darfur in order to, I quote, "cleanse their lineage." Such incitement to rape as a method of war and ethnic hatred is utterly unacceptable. Mr. President, those supporting the perpetrators and those atrocities, namely the RSF, including through the supply of arms and mercenaries, are unfortunately enabling the slaughter of the Sudanese people. We condemn in the most stronger possible terms all external interferences that continue to fuel the conflict in Sudan. We echo the AUPSC's call. The RSF and their enablers must be held accountable. We also condemn the establishment of a parallel government authority in areas under RSF control. My country reaffirms its commitment to the sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of Sudan. We also reaffirm our commitment to sustainable peace in Sudan that is Sudanese-owned and led with support of the EU and the United Nations through the personal envoy of the Secretary General. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Indonesia.
Mr. President, Indonesia is deeply appalled by reports of mass atrocities and ethnically targeted violence committed by the Rapid Support Forces in Al Fashir. The scale and brutality of these crimes demand the strongest condemnation and immediate decisive action. Indonesia calls for concerted efforts to end the bloodshed and ensure the protection of civilians. The ongoing siege of El Safer by the RSF must be lifted immediately to allow safe, rapid, and unhindered humanitarian access. Mr. President, this special session will only be meaningful if the aspirations of Sudan, as the country concerned, are duly considered. The crisis in Al Fashir is driven by impunity and the flows of weapons. The Sudanese government's duty to protect its people must be supported by the international community. This means holding the perpetrators accountable and refraining from external interference that fuels conflicts and instability. The council should also strengthen technical assistance to help Sudan fulfill its international obligations. Indonesia reaffirms its solidarity with the people of Sudan and its commitment to Sudan's sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity. We call for an inclusive Sudanese-led political process towards sustainable peace and for all parties to return to mediation. Thank you.
Ethiopia aligns itself with the statement delivered by Ghana. Ethiopia expresses its deep concern over the deteriorating humanitarian and human rights situation in and around Al Fashir. Reports of immense civilian suffering, mass displacement, and destruction of essential infrastructure are profoundly alarming. Ethiopia strongly condemns all violations of human rights and breaches of international humanitarian law by any party. We further underscore that external interference is prolonging the conflict and must cease to allow a peaceful, Sudanese-owned resolution. Building on the constructive role it played in two thousand and eighteen under the leadership of Prime Minister Abi Ahmed Abi Ahmed that led to the formation of the Sovereign Council and the constitutional transition, Ethiopia remains committed to working with all Sudanese actors to halt the violence and rebuild peace. Ethiopia firmly believes in the Sudanese people’s capacity to bridge divides and lay the foundations of an inclusive democracy. Mr. President, we call on the United Nations to play its rightful role and engage directly in the Sudanese crisis in collaboration with the African Union to mediate peace. This is not a moment of fragmented or competing initiatives. It is a time for coherent, collaborative, and Africa-centered action that places the needs and aspirations of the Sudanese people at the forefront. In closing, Ethiopia reaffirms its unwavering commitment to Sudan’s sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity and stands in full solidarity with the brotherly people of Sudan. The full version of this statement will be uploaded to the extranet. I thank you.
Merci. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Belgium.
Mr. President, Belgium aligns itself with the EU statement. We strongly condemn the extreme violence perpetrated by the RSF in and around El Fashir. The scale and brutality of these acts, including deliberate targeting of civilians, summary executions, ethnically motivated killings, sexual and gender-based violence are shocking. These constitute grave breaches of international humanitarian and human rights law and may amount to the most serious crimes under international law. Belgium calls for an immediate halt to arms supplies to the RSF and full respect for the arms embargo. The fall of El Fashir has deepened the world’s worst humanitarian crisis, causing massive displacement and famine. The use of starvation as a weapon of war is abhorrent and must be investigated. Humanitarian access remains blocked, and local initiatives like the emergency response rooms are facing enormous difficulties. Belgium has therefore increased its humanitarian support to Sudan. All parties committed grave violations with impunity and accountability has been absent. We welcome the ongoing ICC’s investigations and support the mandate of the Fact-Finding Mission, urging full cooperation and unhindered access. We reiterate our call for an immediate ceasefire and an inclusive peace process, humanitarian access and the protection of civilians, as well as accountability. The full version of our statement is uploaded on the extranet. Thank you.
Merci. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Kenya.
Mr. President, given the gravity and magnitude of the ongoing conflict, Kenya welcomes the convening of this special session, which demands our collective attention and urgent coordinated response. We express our deep concern at the scale of violence and humanitarian suffering in and around Al Shafa and the unimaginable toll this conflict continues to have on vulnerable civilians, including on women and children. It’s critical that this council plays its crucial role in building on the political momentum required to bring this crisis to an end and to leverage all appropriate channels, including those mechanisms which enjoy the content of the country concerned. We welcome Sudan’s engagement during the consultations and commend the core group for incorporating key proposals, including critical alignment of all international and regional efforts with an African Union-led framework. This approach is essential to avoid fragmentation and duplication while ensuring a cohesive and effective response. Kenya reiterates its call for an immediate cessation of hostilities by all parties and further welcomes inclusion in the draft of the principle that there is no military solution to this conflict and that only a political, inclusive, and Sudan-led and own process can bring lasting peace. We urge this council to commit to solutions that are cognizant to the needs and priorities of the country concerned and facilitate a balanced, pragmatic, and impact-driven approach anchored on respect for Sudan’s sovereignty while supporting human rights protection and accountability. I thank you.
Merci. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Mexico.
Thank you, President. Mexico regrets the humanitarian impact of the conflict between the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces following the recent capture of El Fashir by the RSF. We note with grave concern the alarming reports on mass human rights violations and indiscriminate attacks against civilian populations. We recognize the leadership of the African Union in the quest for a solution towards an immediate ceasefire. We reiterate our call for the steadfast respect of IHL and for international human rights law. We urge all actors who are facilitating transfer of weapons to fully abide by the embargo imposed by the Security Council for Darfur region. Mexico supported the convening of this special session, convinced that this council should maintain timely dialogue when it comes to situations that require urgent attention. Finally, we call for the resolution presented today to be adopted by consensus to send a clear signal that the international community unequivocally condemns the atrocities perpetrated in El Fashir. Thank you.
Merci. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Germany.
Thank you, Mr. President. Germany aligns itself with the statement delivered by the United Kingdom on behalf of the core group and with the EU statement. The situation in El Fashir is unbearable. Reports of large-scale atrocities, including targeted ethnic and sexual violence committed by the Rapid Support Forces, have left us deeply appalled and horrified. The deliberate attacks against civilians and civilian infrastructure are indefensible and may amount to war crimes and crimes against humanity. Germany strongly condemns these atrocities. They must be fully investigated and those responsible held to account. Impunity can no longer serve as a breeding ground for further crimes. We therefore urge this council to support a strong resolution that mandates an urgent inquiry by the Fact-Finding Mission. Mr. President, Sudan is facing the world’s most severe humanitarian crisis. Women and children are suffering most, facing hunger displacement and horrific sexual violence. Germany has increased its humanitarian support for people in need in Sudan and neighboring countries to 141 million euros this year. German Minister of State Güler visited Sudan and the wider region in late October, meeting with key actors and urging them for unhindered humanitarian access, a ceasefire, and a credible political process. Germany remains ready to assist all efforts towards peace, justice, and accountability. Thank you.
Merci. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Switzerland.
Thank you, President. Switzerland supports the convening of this special session. We thank the core group for having taken this initiative. We are deeply shocked by recent developments in Al Shafa and Cordofan. We urge all parties, and particularly the RSF and their allies, to put an end to hostilities, to respect international law, including IHL and IHRL. We firmly condemn all violations committed by the parties to the conflict, and we recall to parties their obligation to prevent such violations. We underscore as well their obligation of providing timely, unhindered, and lasting access to all civilians. The devastating war in Sudan must come to an end. The protection of civilians, to include humanitarian personnel, must remain an absolute priority. We call upon all states to implement Security Council resolutions. This includes the weapons embargo and to put an end to all exterior support, including through mercenaries. Ensuring accountability for violations of IHL and IHRL remain priorities for Switzerland. The work of the Fact-Finding Mission is essential. We call upon the Sudanese government to afford unhindered access. The elements gathered by the Fact-Finding Mission are precious for the ICC and other central actors. This includes the United Nations Bureau for the Prevention of Genocide, NR2P. Switzerland reaffirms its support to mediation efforts and calls upon parties to fully cooperate to put an end to hostilities.
Mr. President, recently in El Fashir, Sudan, the situation is concerning. Large numbers of civilians are trapped in fighting. Casualties continue to arise, and the human rights situation has worsened drastically. We condemn all acts that harm civilians. The most urgent task is to cease the fire and violence, elevate humanitarian crisis, and restore stability as soon as possible. We call on all parties to immediately stop hostilities, protect the facility humanitarian access to El Fashir to ensure the fundamental rights of Sudanese people, including the right to life. We firmly support the sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of Sudan. Resolving the Sudan issue depends on the Sudanese people themselves. Imposing country-specific human rights mechanisms and expanding their mandates will complicate the situation further. We hope the council can, on the basis of respecting views of country concerned, and seek common ground so as to facilitate a lasting solution through dialogue and negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of North Macedonia.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are deeply concerned about the worsening situation in Sudan, particularly the escalating and systematic violence in and around El Fashir. Hundreds have been killed, thousands have fled their homes, and countless others face inhuman treatment. We are especially alarmed by the plight of women and children trapped between frontlines and repeatedly displaced. They face starvation, lack of clean water, and widespread violence, including sexual and gender-based violence. Mounting evidence indicates that rape is being deliberately and systematically used as a weapon of war. North Macedonia calls for an immediate cessation of hostilities, unimpeded humanitarian access to all affected areas, and urgent de-escalation. All parties must fully respect international humanitarian law, protect civilians and humanitarian personnel, and end attacks on hospitals and civilian infrastructure. We condemn atrocities committed by all parties and demand justice and accountability for the victims. Women and children have to be protected, and safe passage for those fleeing violence must be ensured. Finally, North Macedonia welcomes ongoing regional and international efforts to secure a permanent ceasefire and provide tangible humanitarian relief across Sudan. I think.
Merci. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ghana.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ghana welcomes the convening of this special session. Ghana has been genuinely alarmed by the systematic, widespread, and grievous human rights violations unfolding before our eyes in El Fashir over the past several months. We are certainly not happy with the current state of affairs, and our ambition remains, as stated before, a swift return to normalcy. Ghana strongly condemns all the reported atrocities. Ghana calls on the Rapid Support Forces to end the unwarranted attacks on civilians as well as on civilian infrastructure in El Fashir. We further urge the RSF to engage in meaningful dialogue with the de facto authorities within the context of the African Union Roadmap for Peace in the Sudan. We also emphasize the need for all reported violations of human rights and crimes, including conflict-related sexual violence committed by the RSF in and around El Fashir, to be investigated and the perpetrators held to account. In closing, we urge the council to extend every necessary support to the Sudanese authorities, especially support to the domestic judicial processes established by the authorities to investigate all the alleged violations. I thank you.
Merci. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Maldives.
Mr. President, the Maldives remains deeply concerned over the deteriorating human rights situation in Sudan. For too long, the people of Sudan have endured devastation of conflict, trapped in one of the most severe humanitarian crises of our time. Reports from the ground paint a grim picture. Women and girls continue to suffer sexual and gender-based violence. Civilians, including children, are being killed. Millions remain displaced without adequate protection or assistance. Today, over half of Sudan’s population rely on humanitarian assistance. This is an alarming figure, and we cannot look away from the human cost of this conflict. Two years have passed since the Jeddah declaration, yet the promise of peace remains unfulfilled. Our overriding priority must be an immediate and comprehensive ceasefire. But we also know that peace is not simply the absence of conflict. It is the presence of dialogue and reconciliation. Mr. President, now more than ever, this council must rise above division and act with unity. Our efforts should aim to ensure continued technical assistance through OHCHR, restore peace and stability, and provide vital humanitarian aid the people of Sudan need. I thank you.
Merci. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cyprus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cyprus aligns itself with the EU statement. We are alarmed by the horrifying human rights and humanitarian situation in El Fashir. Reports of deliberate RSF attacks on civilians, including ethnically motivated killings, sexual violence, and obstruction of humanitarian aid are deeply distressing and constitute grave violations of international humanitarian and human rights law. Cyprus condemns these atrocities in the strongest possible terms and calls for their immediate cessation. We underline the crucial role of the ICC and the FFM on Sudan, whose work remains vital to ensuring accountability. Cyprus reaffirms its support for Sudan’s sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity. We support all regional and international efforts to secure an immediate ceasefire and urge all external actors to seize any military, financial, or other support to the warring parties and to fully respect the UN arms embargo. We call for unimpeded and sustained humanitarian access to all affected populations and urge all parties to uphold their obligations under international law to protect civilians and humanitarian personnel. I thank you.
Merci. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Brazil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brazil has been falling with great concern the situation in El Fashir, as well as the escalating violence in the North Darfur and Cordofan regions. This represents a critical turning point in an already dire humanitarian crisis raging in Sudan since 2023. Brazil strongly condemns the attacks by the Rapid Support Forces against civilian targets in El Fashir, including hospital facilities, which are estimated to have caused the death of more than 2,000 civilians. We specifically condemn the ethnic and sexual violence, summary executions, and forced displacement committed in the city and around the region. We reiterate that hunger must not be used as a weapon of war. In this regard, we call on all parties to ensure free and unimpeded humanitarian assistance and guarantee the protection of humanitarian workers. All parties involved must cease hostilities. We recall the importance of all parties to respect international humanitarian rights and humanitarian law. We support the UN High Commission for Human Rights and the Fact-Finding Mission for Sudan on this endeavor to investigate all human rights violations with the view to bringing justice and accountability. I thank you.
Merci. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Romania.
Mr. President, Romania aligns with the EU statement. The ongoing conflict in Sudan with its latest developments and credible reports of crimes under international law in and around El Fashir is alarming. Indiscriminate and deliberate attacks against civilians, civilian infrastructure, medical facilities, and humanitarian supplies, hunger, forced displacements, summary executions, widespread sexual and gender-based violence, continue to plunge people in extreme physical and psychological pain. Regrettably, children, women, elderly persons with disabilities, and other persons in most vulnerable situations are hit the hardest. We condemn all violations of human rights and of international humanitarian law in El Fashir and across the country and call for the immediate cessation. Perpetrators should be brought to justice. The evolving humanitarian crisis, the most severe in the world, is deeply concerning. Safe and unhindered humanitarian access within the country is urgent. We should ensure that humanitarian assistance reaches the most in need first. We call for an immediate and durable ceasefire and for negotiations to peacefully solve the conflict. All other conditions for such an outcome, including preserving Sudan’s unity and territorial integrity, and ending the support of involved actors, should be guaranteed. We reaffirm our strong support for regional and international coordinated mediation efforts, as well as for the Fact-Finding Mission’s mandate, enabling it to fulfill its investigative functions, including in regard with the recent violation abuses of international human rights and humanitarian law committed in and around El Fashir.
Merci. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Democratic Republic of Congo. Thank you, President. The Democratic Republic of Congo associates itself with the statement made by Ghana on behalf of the African Group. We are pleased at the convening of this special session on the situation of human rights in El Fashir and in its environs in the context of the conflict underway in Sudan. My delegation is concerned over the escalation of violence in El Fashir, as well as the effect of the ongoing combat in Sudan, which has a devastating effect on civilians. And this includes massive displacement of persons, loss of human life, and catastrophic effects. We are suffering a similar event in the north and south Kivu, so we understand the suffering and we express our solidarity with the civilians of El Fashir. We condemn the criminal activities perpetrated against civilians of Sudan and the serious human rights and humanitarian violations. We call for safe, rapid, and unhindered humanitarian access to the populations in El Fashir that are suffering from these attacks and human rights violations. Further, the RC calls or urges the international community to help Sudan in its efforts to find truth and fight against impunity and to prevent and to prevent other probable human rights violations. Further, we reaffirm the need for all states to respect the sovereignty and territorial integrity and independence and political unity of Sudan. I thank you. Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of France. Thank you, President. France associates itself with the statement of the EU. The taking of Al Fashir by the RSF makes this special session crucial. France urges the RSF to protect all civilians without discrimination, to respect IHL and human rights law. We firmly condemn the atrocities committed by the RSF against civilians. These could be crimes against humanity and war crimes, according to the Office of the Prosecutor of the ICC. France calls upon the Sudanese Armed Forces and their allies to show restraint in their responses and to protect and spare the civilians caught in Al Fashir. These humanitarian crises in Sudan reaches a new crescendo. France condemns firmly the attack of the Saudi hospital in Al Fashir, which has led to 460 deaths, according to the WHO. We call for unhindered fast and safe access for humanitarian personnel, and we call upon implementation and urgently of the humanitarian truce proposed by the Quad. Only a ceasefire and a peace process can put end to the suffering of the Sudanese people. The parties to the conflict are responsible to commit negotiations. And France calls for a respect for the arms embargo and an end to foreign support to this conflict. France also calls for the respect of sovereignty and territorial integrity of Sudan, as well as an extension of the ICC mandate. Thank you. I give the floor to the Netherlands.
My colleagues, esteemed human rights defenders, hundreds of thousands of innocent civilians in Al Fashir are living through the darkest of days. We have seen reports of ethnically motivated mass killings, conflict-related sexual violence, and starvation used as a method of warfare by the Rapid Support Forces, all acts that are prohibited by international law. These atrocities are being fueled through supply of arms and funds, worsening the already most severe humanitarian crisis in the world. The African Union and European Union have voiced grave concerns about the escalating violence, and so has the Netherlands. So, the Netherlands is calling for an immediate end to all human rights violations, respect for international humanitarian law, and full compliance with the UN arms embargo. We need to document and investigate violations through the fact-finding mission of the Human Rights Council and through the International Criminal Court. Humanitarian support must be increased, and the Netherlands contributes in various ways. And I urge my colleagues to do whatever they can in terms of finance and diplomacy. We cannot stand by and do nothing.
I thank the minister. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Chile. Thank you, President. Chile appreciates the convening of this special session, given the extreme gravity of the situation in Al Fashir and other surrounding areas. This calls for a firm response from this Council. We condemn, in the strongest terms, the violence and mass atrocities as well as all other serious violations of international humanitarian law committed by the parties, the RSF and other parties. We urge the parties to bring a cessation of hostilities, safe humanitarian corridors, and full unhindered and safe access to human rights observers and humanitarian workers. President, as with other situations in which there is a flagrant violation of human rights, impunity should not be tolerated. The fact-finding mission as a mandated mechanism for an impartial and independent investigation, which should determine responsibilities and allow for truth, justice, and reparation for victims, has the full support of my country. In step with that, we see in the arms embargo from the Security Council, we call upon all third-party countries that finance or arm or support the parties to put an end to any contribution that prolongs the conflict and that they meet the commitment of not being enablers of mass atrocities. Chile reaffirms its commitment to the protection of civilians and to international protection of human rights law. And we continue to support multilateral efforts. Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Albania.
Thank you, Mr. President. Albania is deeply alarmed by the catastrophic human rights and humanitarian situation in Sudan, especially in and around Al Fashir and across North Darfur. We are deeply appalled by incredible reports of mass atrocities committed by Rapid Support Forces, including summary executions, ethnically targeted killings, and widespread use of sexual and gender-based violence. We are particularly disturbed by reports of attack on hospitals. Humanitarian workers have also been targeted, making it even more difficult to deliver lifesaving assistance. Mr. President, Albania fully supports the draft resolution presented by UK, Germany, the Kingdom of Netherlands, Ireland, and Norway. Albania also aligns with the statement delivered by the EU. We reaffirm the urgent need for an immediate and unconditional ceasefire, safe and unhindered humanitarian access, and the protection of civilians in accordance with international law. We call on all parties to fully implement the Jeddah Declaration of Commitment to protect civilians and to allow civilians to move to safer areas. Accountability is essential to any sustainable solution, and those who commit atrocities must face justice. Albania supports all regional and international efforts aimed to de-escalation and Sudanese-led political process. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bulgaria.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bulgaria aligns itself with the statement made by the European Union. Bulgaria is deeply concerned by the broader escalation of the conflict between the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Force in North Darfur and the Kordofan region, and particularly by the violence and atrocities committed by the Rapid Support Force in Al Fashir and its surrounding areas following the capture of the town. We condemn all reported human rights violations and abuses and violations of international humanitarian law, including summary executions, sexual violence, mass internal and external displacement, and the dramatic deterioration of the humanitarian situation. All perpetrators of these violations and abuses must be held accountable. Bulgaria urges all actors in Sudan to take effective measures for the protection of civilians, health, and humanitarian workers. We call for ensuring immediate, safe, and unhindered humanitarian access to all those in need with a focus on the vulnerable groups such as IDPs, women, children, the elderly, and the disabled. All parties must respect international humanitarian law and uphold their commitment under the Jeddah Declaration. We urge all parties to the conflict in Sudan to immediately cease hostilities, establish an independent monitoring mechanism of the ceasefire, and negotiate a peaceful settlement of the conflict. Bulgaria reiterates its support for the independent international fact-finding mission and expects it to thoroughly investigate the recent violations and abuses of international--
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bangladesh.
Thank you, Mr. President. We take note of the High Commissioner's opening remarks. My delegation also aligns with the OIC's statement. Mr. President, Bangladesh is gravely alarmed by the catastrophic humanitarian situation unfolding in Sudan, especially by the recent horrific atrocities committed during and after the fall of Al Fashir. Bangladesh condemns unequivocally the deliberate targeting of civilians, conflict-related sexual violence, and weaponization of starvation, and the systematic destruction of civilian infrastructure. Mr. President, Bangladesh calls for immediate, safe, and unhindered humanitarian access to all affected populations, including those trapped in and around Al Fashir. Lifesaving aid must be allowed to flow, and the safe passage of civilians fleeing violence must be ensured. The people of Sudan deserve peace, dignity, and justice. In this regard, Bangladesh underscores the urgent need of a humanitarian truce leading to a lasting ceasefire. We urge the international community and all relevant regional mechanisms to help end the suffering and support a Sudan-owned path toward lasting peace and accountability. To that extent and in the context of the ongoing UN liquidity crisis, we underscore the importance of the complementarity and coordination among UN mechanisms working on Sudan. Finally, Bangladesh stands in unwavering solidarity with the people of Sudan and reaffirm the commitment to the sovereignty, unity, and--
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Morocco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We would like to express our deep concern regarding the situation in the brotherly country of Sudan following the atrocities in Al Fashir. We condemn the violations against innocent civilians, namely women and children. We express our full solidarity with the brotherly Sudan in these dire situations, and we are ready to support them to overcome this crisis. In this critical context, we call upon the international community to support, to provide humanitarian assistance and to alleviate the suffering of the civilians, namely in the face of malnutrition and scarcity of drinking water. We reiterate our call to support the efforts of supporting the national institutions, relaunching the national dialogue and reconciliation away from any foreign interference that could aggravate tensions and destabilize the whole region. Finally, we reiterate our support to initiatives aiming at finding a solution to the root causes of this conflict to preserve national sovereignty and territorial integrity of brotherly Sudan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Gambia.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Gambia aligns with the statements delivered on behalf of the African Group and the OIC. We join Council members in condemning the shocking human rights atrocities in and around Al Fashir, which has worsened the already dire condition of the ordinary people of the region, especially women and children. Therefore, this special session is an opportunity for the Council to live up to its mandate of protecting victims of human rights violations and abuses and holding perpetrators accountable. In this regard, we believe that our response in this special session must remain victim-centered with a view to restoring the dignity, safety, and rights of victims and survivors of these atrocities and ensuring unhindered humanitarian access. We further emphasize that a sustainable, solution-oriented outcome requires full complementarity with the ongoing efforts of the African Union and IGART to de-escalate and arrive at a durable political settlement in full respect for the sovereignty, independence, unity, and territorial integrity of Sudan. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Vietnam.
Mr. President, Vietnam shows deep concern about the grave humanitarian situation and serious human rights violations in Al Fashir, Sudan. We strongly condemn OS violence against civilians, emphasize the respect of international humanitarian law, and stress the need to protect civilians, especially women and children, as well as safeguard essential infrastructure and services, including hospital, water supplies, and humanitarian facilities vital to human life. We call for the immediate cessation of hostilities and a peaceful solution to the conflict. All parties must create favorable conditions for the safe and unhindered delivery humanitarian aid to affected populations. Vietnam supports a comprehensive approach to peace, that is Sudanese-led, with the support of present and actors, especially the African Union, and with full respect for the sovereignty, territorial integrity, and unity of Sudan. The international community should-- and accompany Sudanese-led effort for lasting peace and stability. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Malawi.
Mr. President, Malawi aligns with the statement delivered by Ghana on behalf of the Africa Group. My delegation expresses solidarity with the people of Sudan, more specifically the civilians in Al Fashir, who are being subjected to gross human rights violations and abuses. We welcome the multiple initiatives aimed at ending the conflict in Sudan, including various commitments made towards ceasefire and the protection of civilians, such as the Juba Declaration and the Jeddah Declaration of Commitment to Protect the Civilians of Sudan. We also take note of the commitment of the Sudanese government that its judicial authorities will continue with the investigation throughout Sudan, including in Al Fashir. Mr. President, it is important to address the situation in a balanced manner by promoting peace and reconciliation, observing impartiality, incorporating and supporting national and regional initiatives, and also respecting humanitarian law. We call upon all parties to the conflict to take tangible steps to implement all commitments, and we urge the international community to continue with the efforts to end this conflict by providing all required support in building ongoing initiatives, including the EU roadmap for the resolution of the Sudan crisis. I thank you.
Thank you. Now, move to the list of speakers from Council observers, and I give the floor to the Minister of State of the United Kingdom for a video statement.
The violence and targeting of civilians in Al Fashir by the Rapid Support Forces is appalling. The reporting is horrific. Ethnically motivated killings, executions, starvation, and rape as a weapon of war. These are not isolated incidents. Ongoing impunity and reticence from the international community means Sudan is facing the largest humanitarian crisis of the 21st century. Famine continues to spread, yet both the Sudanese Armed Forces and the Rapid Support Forces continue obstructing aid from reaching the 30 million people in need. The UK has announced an additional £5 million in humanitarian support, bringing our aid this year to £125 million. But aid is not enough. The guns must fall silent. We need a renewed push for peace, backed by global cooperation through the Quad and the United Nations. There must be accountability in Sudan, and that is not possible without facts. The fact-finding mission is pivotal to establishing the facts needed to hold perpetrators to account for these horrific crimes. I urge this Council to show the Sudanese people that they are not forgotten.
I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Arab Emirates.
Mr. President, the horrors on the ground only confirm there is no military solution to this civil war. The Quad's joint statement, achieved thanks to US leadership, provides a definitive roadmap to end this conflict, a humanitarian truce leading immediately to a permanent ceasefire, and a transition to an independent civilian-led government not controlled by either warring party. The UE condemns attacks against civilians by the RSF in Al Fashir and by the two warring parties across Sudan. We urge the SAF and the RSF to immediately cease all attacks against the civilian population, which constitute grave violations of international humanitarian law. The warring parties must halt their obstruction of humanitarian access, and the international community must ensure that those responsible for atrocities are held accountable without exception. Regrettably, the warring party represented in this session continues indiscriminate attacks on markets, villages, and hospitals amid the famine, while ignoring international calls for a truce, prolonging the conflict, and weaponizing humanitarian access. This is nothing new, as they have harbored terrorists and sheltered individuals indicted for genocide. We've always stood in solidarity with Sudan from its darkest moments to those of greatest hope. We recently pledged an additional $100 million to support urgent humanitarian operations in Al Fashir, and we are prepared to do more to support humanitarian response. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to UN Women.
Chair, the war in Sudan, it is a war on women. It demands the world's immediate and decisive action. Nearly 11 million women and girls are acute food insecure, and starvation is used as a weapon of war. Health services have collapsed, and in Darfur, over 80% of medical facilities have been shut down, leaving women facing acute maternal risks behind. Women and girls in Sudan, they face horrific violence, including rape, sexual slavery, and forced marriage in and around Al Fashir, North Darfur, and the Kordofan region. This cycle of violence must end. Perpetrators must be held accountable, and survivors must have access to justice and comprehensive services. UN Women commends the fact-finding mission for its work in documenting sexual and gender-based violence, and we stand ready to support the fact-finding mission's continued efforts to document these crimes and violations and to ensure they are fully reflected in the investigations reporting, including as called for in the resolution table here at the Council today. Excellencies, we urge all parties to commit to the humanitarian ceasefire now and guarantee safe corridors for women, girls, and civilians, and to facilitate principal humanitarian assistance. Protection of humanitarian personnel, especially local women aid workers, must be scaled up. And attacks on women organizations aiming to silence them must end. They are frontline responders, not targets, and they need our protection and resources now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Saudi Arabia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We express our deep concern and condemnation of the serious humanitarian violations during the latest attacks by the RSF on Al Fashir. We reiterate that it is very important for the RSF to fulfill their duties in terms of protecting civilians and securing-- of protecting civilians and securing the access to humanitarian assistance, commitment to international humanitarian law according to the Jeddah Declaration, calling for the protection of civilians in Sudan signed on the 11th of May 2023. We also express our condemnation of the targeting of the Saudi hospital in Al Fashir, which led to the killing and injury of many people. This is a violation of international law and international humanitarian law. The Kingdom of Saudi Arabia reiterates its rejection to these violations and reiterate the importance of protecting medical and humanitarian staff as well as resorting to self-restraint and the prevention of targeting of civilians. We call upon returning for dialogue immediately leading to a ceasefire, and we reiterate the importance of Sudan's unity, security, and stability, as well as the necessity to preserve its legitimate institutions and rejecting foreign interference that increases the suffering of the brotherly Sudanese people. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Luxembourg.
Monsieur le Président, le Luxembourg, c'est ce.
President, Luxembourg aligns with the EU statement. We remain profoundly alarmed by the scope of the humanitarian and human crisis in Sudan. Testimony and images we've received from Al Fashir since the city was taken by the RSF resemble once more are equal to those of 2000, with everyday scenes of rape, executions carried out against exhausted population leading to Exodus. Tens of millions of peoples have left the city, tens of thousands of people have left the city, many were not able to find refuge. We reiterate our call to all parties to the conflict to agree to a ceasefire and immediately establish a humanitarian truce, safe passage of evacuation for civilians, an end to all external support that fuels this conflict. We also stress the importance of respecting international humanitarian law. With all eyes on Al Fashir at the moment, we cannot lose sight of the fact of al-Abaid struck for a number of weeks by RSF shelling the population of that city, a fear falling under siege again and being deprived of their most fundamental rights, including the right to fly. Don't let the past replay out a second time. I thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Jordan.
In the name of God most merciful, we are holding our council today amid attacks on the Sudanese Al Fashir city. We condemn these crimes that violate law, fuel hate, and throw civilians into insecurity. We reiterate our solidarity with Sudan today and every day. That's why we need to gather our efforts to end this tragedy happening on Sudan's land against its people. What we want is to take steps to end the crisis from its roots by achieving a political solution to end bloodshed and violence imposed on our brotherly Sudanese people, a solution that will secure a bright and safe future desired by our brothers to their children and grandchildren. Mr. Chair, we support all regional and international efforts as the efforts of the Quad, and we reiterate the need to de-escalate, to protect civilians and humanitarian staff, and to facilitate the work of humanitarian organizations. Finally, our brotherly country of Sudan deserves to enjoy peace and security, to end the suffering of its people, to respect its sovereignty and territorial integrity, and that should be the light that will guide us in our efforts to a solution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Slovakia.
Thank you, President. Slovakia aligns itself with the EU statement. We are deeply concerned by the continuing escalation of violence and the catastrophic humanitarian situation in Sudan. We condemn in the strongest possible terms the acts of violence perpetrated by the RSF in Al Fashir and other areas, including deliberate attacks on civilians. These atrocities constitute crimes against humanity, and the perpetrators must be held fully accountable. Justice and accountability are essential to break the cycle of impunity and to lay the foundation for lasting peace. We deplore the dire humanitarian conditions across most of Sudan. Millions of people are in urgent need of assistance. Access to food, water, and essential services remains severely limited. Slovakia welcomes and supports all international efforts aimed at alleviating human suffering, including initiatives focused on protecting and maintaining critical civilian infrastructure. Our actions should focus on supporting the Sudanese people, protecting their fundamental rights, and preserving prospects for a future partnership with a democratic Sudan. Slovakia reaffirms that the protection and promotion of human rights must remain a priority in all efforts to address the crisis. We stand ready to work with partners to ensure justice for victims and to support mechanisms that uphold accountability. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Egypt.
Egypt follows with concern the situation in Al Fashir, tragic events threatening the fabric of the brotherly Sudan and deepening the suffering of people with whom we share kinship, history, and faith. This is a violation of human rights and human dignity. We condemn in the strongest terms the crimes and violations against civilians by the RSF, and we call upon this council to shoulder its responsibility to ensure accountability, to protect civilians from these escalations, especially women and children who pay the highest price for this catastrophe. We stress, we say it loud and clear, the Sudan should be united and strong with sovereign territory and sovereign decisions without any imposition of any external interference. We need to start a humanitarian path to allow humanitarian access and to protect civilians, to start a permanent ceasefire, to start a Sudanese-owned and-led political process to keep the institutions of the Sudan without any external interference. Egypt has always stood with the Sudanese people in all the crises. Sudan will remain united and strong, and Egypt will stand in solidarity with Sudan until it brings back its stability, security, and peace. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Monaco.
Thank you, President. The Principality of Monaco is profoundly troubled by the alarming situation in the city in and around Al Fashir. Grave human rights and IHL violations have been perpetrated in recent weeks. Some could be tantamount to war crimes or crimes against humanity. Monaco urges all parties to end the violence and commit to a political dialogue with a view to a negotiated solution. We reiterate also our call for immediate unhindered humanitarian access as well as for a full respect of IHL. Given the gravity of the situation, the Principality of Monaco has supported the convening of this session and co-sponsors the draft resolution before the council for an independent investigation to be carried out and for accountability to be established. Finally, Monaco expresses its solidarity with the Sudanese people and reiterates its support to all efforts towards restoring peace and stability in that country. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ireland.
Mr. President, Ireland aligns with the EU statement and with the joint statement of the core group on Sudan. We are horrified by the reports of large-scale ethnically motivated atrocities in Al Fashir committed by the RSF and the intensifying attacks in North Darfur and in the Kordofan region, including summary executions and sexual and gender-based violence. Ireland condemns in the strongest terms the widespread violence against civilians, humanitarian and healthcare workers, including the use of rape and starvation as weapons of war. The violence has exacerbated famine conditions, increased displacement, and heightened humanitarian need. Ireland calls for an immediate cessation of hostilities and for all parties to respect international humanitarian and human rights law. All civilians must be protected and safe passage granted to those attempting to flee Al Fashir and the surrounding areas. Immediate and unhindered humanitarian access must be facilitated. We urge all states and actors to comply with the Security Council arms embargo on Darfur and call on them to stop the provision of weapons to warring parties. Mr. President, impunity in Sudan must end. It is imperative that the perpetrators of human rights violations and abuses are held accountable and brought to justice. In this regard, the FFM must be provided with unhindered access in order to carry out its vital work. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Turkey.
Mr. President, we are deeply saddened by the events in Al Fashir. Turkey strongly condemns atrocities committed against civilians, which constitute a blatant violation of international humanitarian law. We urge an immediate end to the fighting in Sudan, the cessation of attacks on innocent civilians, the provision of safe passage, and the unimpeded delivery of humanitarian aid. We reiterate our unwavering support for the unity, territorial integrity, and sovereignty of Sudan. The establishment of a credible ceasefire alongside the sustainable and secure delivery of humanitarian assistance throughout the country remains an urgent priority. International human rights and humanitarian law must be the guiding framework to protect civilians in the country. In these difficult times, we cannot remain indifferent to the dire humanitarian situation. Turkey will continue to provide humanitarian assistance to help alleviate the suffering of the brotherly and sisterly Sudanese people. As for the resolution to be adopted at the end of this urgent session, the concerned country must be constructively engaged and its concerns be kept on board. Existing mechanisms must be used effectively before new ones are conceived. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ukraine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ukraine expresses profound concern over the escalating violence and reported atrocities in Sudan. We are deeply alarmed by the serious violations of international humanitarian law and international human rights law, and by their devastating impact on civilians, particularly women and children, and in and around Al Fashir, as well as the broader escalation of hostilities around North Darfur and the Kordofan region. Ukraine opposes any attempts of fragmentation of the Republic of Sudan and its state institutions. The Sudanese people have the inalienable right to live in peace and security. We reaffirm Ukraine's unwavering position in support of the unity, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Sudan and the building of his democratic and prosperous society. Ukraine stands in full solidarity with the Sudanese people and unequivocally condemns the ongoing violence against them. We call upon all parties to the armed conflict as well as the international community to take all necessary measures to halt the bloodshed, ensure accountability for crimes committed against civilians, and prevent further deterioration of the humanitarian situation. We emphasize that these measures are not only vital for the Sudanese people but are also essential for promoting lasting peace, security, and stability throughout the African continent. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Greece.
Thank you, Mr. President. Greece aligns with the statement of the European Union. Greece is profoundly concerned by the appalling violence in Al Fashir and the unprecedented humanitarian crisis in Sudan. We strongly condemn the seizure of the city by the RSF and call for an immediate cessation of hostilities, indiscriminate attacks against civilians, summary executions, ethnically motivated killings, and gender-based violence. We particularly condemn the systematic and targeted violence against women and children. These appalling violations of international humanitarian and human rights law must be subject to thorough investigation. Accountability remains essential. We support the UN, the work of the UN fact-finding mission to ensure impartial documentation and prosecution of these crimes. Greece reaffirms its commitment to Sudan's sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity, and supports calls for an immediate ceasefire, the establishment of safe humanitarian corridors, and the provision of safe passage for civilians. Compliance of all parties with international humanitarian and human rights law is imperative. We call on all third actors to halt the transfer of weapons and fighters into Sudan and to support the coordinated diplomatic framework of the UN, AU, IGAD, and the League of Arab States. Only concerted international engagement can prevent further fragmentation of the country that also risks to destabilize the region. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Chad.
Chad aligns with the statements delivered by the groups it belongs to, expresses its profound concern at the armed conflict underway which is ravaging Sudan, a brother country, and we reiterate our solidarity with our kinfolk in Sudan, our brother people. Chad expresses its indignation and firm condemnation of all human rights violations, violations of IHL wheresoever or by whomsoever committed. We call for respect of those rights in line with applicable international obligations under international law. Chad remains convinced that only a negotiated political solution by all the sons and daughters of Sudan can lead to a lasting peace. We reiterate our appeal for a cessation of hostilities and for the search for specific solutions through dialogue. Chad supports all mechanisms that contribute to protecting, preserving, and bolstering human rights. We reaffirm our commitment to Sudan's sovereignty and reiterate that the consent of the country concerned remains a key element in the successful implementation of the mandate of any mechanism. The full version of the statement will be uploaded on the extranet. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Liechtenstein.
Mr. President, Liechtenstein thanks the speakers for their most sobering reports on the horrifying humanitarian and human rights situation in the Sudan, with tens of thousands of civilians remaining trapped in Al Fashir and enduring constant attacks, hunger, and despair while humanitarian relief continues to be denied. We call on all actors to fully commit to the responsibility to protect and to ensure that no mass atrocities can take place in the Sudan. An arms embargo is in place, but weapons continue to flow into the country, wreaking havoc and perpetuating the conflict. We urge all actors to strictly adhere to the embargo to protect civilians from further bloodshed. Mr. President, the situation shows the continued relevance of the referral made by the UN Security Council to the International Criminal Court. Last month, ICC judges convicted a Chan Jeowid leader for serious crimes committed in Darfur. This month, the Office of the Prosecutor expressed deepest concerns over recent reports emerging from Al Fashir about mass killings, rapes, and other crimes committed during the attacks by the Rapid Support Forces. These attacks, if substantiated, could amount to war crimes and crimes against humanity under the Rome Statute. The people of Sudan deserve an end to this man-made catastrophe. Let us ensure collectively that humanity prevails. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to UNICEF.
Mr. President, UNICEF urges immediate and decisive action in response to the rapidly deteriorating security and humanitarian situation in and around Al Fashir. In recent weeks, thousands of families have fled Al Fashir, yet tens of thousands remain trapped, facing atrocious conditions that defy comprehension. Acute food insecurity is rapidly worsening, with famine declared in both Al Fashir and Kadugli. Children are being killed and injured, subjected to rape and other forms of sexual violence, and are recruited and used by parties to the conflict. These are grave violations and an assault on children's rights. Civilians who managed to escape arrive severely malnourished, distressed, and often with physical injuries, many with nothing but clothes on their backs. They reach overcrowded, under-resourced displacement sites and host communities in North Darfur. UNICEF and partners have identified hundreds of unaccompanied and separated children. Access to confidential survivor-centered services remain extremely limited. Urgent scale-up is needed for healthcare, social support, and protection. UNICEF calls on all parties to immediately end and prevent further violations and to comply with the obligations under international humanitarian and human rights law. They must ensure the protection of civilians, especially children, and provide immediate care for survivors of grave child rights violations. In addition, they must guarantee safe, sustained, and unimpeded humanitarian access. Accountability for these atrocities is essential.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Australia.
Thank you, President. Australia is appalled by the rapidly deteriorating situation in Sudan. We condemn the atrocities committed by the Rapid Force, sorry, Rapid Support Forces in Al Fashir and call on an immediate end to the violence. The recent sharp escalation of violence, including conflict-related sexual violence, ethnically motivated mass killings, attacks on humanitarian personnel, and unlawful killings is unacceptable and must end immediately. We are gravely concerned that the humanitarian crisis precipitated by this conflict is worsening with widespread food insecurity and a total collapse of essential health services. Humanitarian agencies must get the necessary permissions to conduct their lifesaving work and reach populations in need. Australia will provide additional humanitarian support to the people of Sudan to be delivered through the United Nations and NGO. through the United Nations and NGO partners, building on our contributions since 2023. A permanent cessation of hostilities is urgently needed. Australia calls on all parties to uphold their obligations under international law, including to protect civilians and humanitarian workers, facilitate safe passage for those fleeing conflict-affected areas and ensure unimpeded access to humanitarian assistance. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela.
Thank you, President. The Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela reaffirms its firm solidarity with the Sudanese people and expresses concern at the conflict in and around Al Fashir, profoundly regretting the loss of human life and the delicate humanitarian situation. Sadly, this conflict is typical to the patterns of destabilization suffered by sovereign nations that are endowed with great natural wealth. We stress the importance that any peace agreement should respect Sudan's territorial integrity and its legitimate control over its natural resources based on respect for international law, in particular for self-determination and non-interference in internal affairs. We stress that cooperation and technical assistance are tools that can contribute to improving the human rights situation, provided they have the consent of the state concerned and respect its sovereignty and territorial integrity. In that regard, we value the mediation led up by the African Union with the active participation of the country concerned. We're convinced that it is only through genuine dialogue and not through violence that we can build a path towards peace and to prosperity for the Sudanese people guaranteeing their human rights. Thank you very much, President.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Canada.
Thank you, Mr. President. We strongly condemn reports of atrocities committed by the Rapid Support Forces in Al Fashir. The massacre of 460 civilians at the Saudi maternity hospital exemplifies a blatant disregard for international humanitarian and human rights law. This is not an isolated case. Sudan faces widespread famine, conflict-related sexual violence and targeted attacks on civilians. Perpetrators must be held accountable and all external actors must cease support that fuels the conflict. Canada calls on all parties to respect their obligations under international humanitarian and human rights law, including the protection of civilians. We call on the parties to ensure rapid, unimpeded humanitarian access and to commit to an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Canada supports UN-mandated efforts, including the fact-finding mission on Sudan, and calls for its unhindered access on the ground in order to ensure accountability and justice for victims. We support a strong resolution and urge this council to act decisively to prevent further devastation. Canada will continue to provide humanitarian development and peace and stabilization, assistance to save lives, support resilience and uphold human rights. Canada stands with the people of Sudan and supports peace efforts, including those led by the Quad, which must be guided by the voices of civilians, especially women and youth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Eritrea.
Thank you, Mr. President. The people and government of the State of Eritrea are deeply saddened by the recent tragic attacks in Al Fashir perpetrated by the RSF, which has resulted in the killing of thousands of innocent lives. Eritrea's position remains clear. The escalation of this conflict has been exacerbated by the involvement of external actors whose motives have no place in the political future of the Sudanese people. Ultimately, a Sudanese-owned inclusive political process is the only way out from the current crisis. Holding a special session merely for the sake of formality will not bring tangible relief to the people of Sudan, who continue to suffer from this devastating conflict, nor will statements made here today on their own advance accountability and justice. What is urgently needed is a genuine commitment and direct engagement with the government of Sudan and to forge a roadmap agreed with the Sudanese government. It is our view that the approach taken by the initiators of this special session fails to adequately reflect these essential considerations. In this regard, it is deeply regrettable that the penholders have shown such disregard for Sudan's position. Finally, Eritrea reaffirms its strong commitment to Sudan's sovereignty, territorial integrity and unity and rejects any attempts of creating a parallel government. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Pakistan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pakistan addresses this special session with the gravest concern for our brothers and sisters in Sudan. We condemn in the strongest terms the atrocities perpetrated by the paramilitary RSF and its auxilia during its assault on Al Fashir in clear violation of Security Council resolutions, including Resolution 2736, which called on RSF to lift its siege on Al Fashir. The massacres of civilians, attacks on humanitarian personnel, health care workers, patients and medical facilities, such as the Saudi maternity hospital, widespread use of rape and sexual violence and preventing civilians from escaping the violence are a blot on the collective conscience of the international community. These crimes must stop and those responsible must be brought to account. Pakistan has consistently maintained that implied equivalence between the RSF and the Sudanese government undermines Sudan's legitimate state institutions and risks creating a situation that paramilitary groups like RSF exploit to commit further atrocities. Pakistan reaffirms its unwavering commitment to Sudan's unity, territorial integrity and sovereignty. We condemn unequivocally the establishment of any so-called parallel governance structures as they risk destabilizing an already volatile region and must be firmly and unequivocally rejected. A sustainable political resolution is the only way out of the conflict. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Uruguay. Thank you, President. We thank the High Commissioner for the update. Uruguay expresses its deep concern over the catastrophic humanitarian situation arising from the serious violations of IHL and IHRL in Sudan. The deliberate attacks against hospitals and other civilian infrastructure, extreme violence and the large-scale offensives of the RSF have had devastating consequences on the civilian population. This is particularly so for women and girls, causing many victims and forced disappearance or rather displacement, rectifies the interpreter. Uruguay also condemns strongly the atrocities committed by the RSF in and around Al Fashir and the including summary executions, torture and ethnically motivated attentions. We call for an immediate and total unconditional ceasefire and a guarantee of rapid, safe and unhindered humanitarian access. Uruguay underscores the need for accountability for all violations and compliance with the Security Council and Human Rights Council resolutions that will bring lasting peace and to the suffering of the Sudanese people. Thank you very much. Thank you. Cameroon. We, Cameroon, associates itself with the other statements made by the groups to which we belong. We are following great concern the human tragedy in Al Fashir. My country condemns in the strongest terms the attacks against civilians, medical personnel, humanitarian personnel and massacres at the Saudi Hospital. We condemn also the sexual violence and summary executions in the region. Cameroon expresses solidarity to the people of Sudan, reaffirming its attachment to sovereignty and unity and territorial integrity of this country. We have the efforts of the African Union, IGAD, the Quad for Suzanne to bring a ceasefire and dialogue that is inclusive in and between and among Sudanese. We encourage also the ongoing cooperation between the African Union, the UN and regional partners for a coordinated response to the humanitarian and humanitarian political response to this crisis. We insist on the need to ensure safe, timely and unhindered access for humanitarian support for the populations that are still trapped in Al Fashir, that are suffering hunger, illness and a lack of water and care. Cameroon calls for an immediate ceasefire and respect for international humanitarian law as well as unhindered access for humanitarian support. We are conviction that only peaceful solutions that are inclusive will allow for restoration of peace and security and dignity for the Sudanese. Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Austria.
Thank you, Mr. President. Austria aligns with the EU statement. We are deeply alarmed by the reports of atrocities committed by the RSF in Al Fashir and surrounding areas, and we strongly condemn these horrific atrocities, including ethnically motivated violence, torture, sexual and gender-based violence and summary executions. Austria calls on all parties to the conflict to immediately cease hostilities, fully respect international humanitarian and human rights law and guarantee the protection of civilians. Safe and unhindered humanitarian access must be ensured without delay and the arms embargo upheld. Austria firmly supports the work of the FFAM and calls for an urgent investigation into the events in and around Al Fashir. Those responsible must be held accountable. We urge all regional and international actors to use their influence and to stop the atrocities, protect civilians and help bring lasting peace and justice to the people of Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Sierra Leone.
Thank you, Chair. The African group expresses alarm at the devastation in Al Fashir. Civilians continue to endure grave violations committed by the ISF and associated groups. The words of the High Commissioner are clear: these atrocities were foreseeable and preventable, yet they were not prevented. We are also alarmed and concerned by the confirmed famine conditions in Al Fashir and the goodly. We strongly condemn the use of starvation as a weapon of war, attacks on humanitarian and health workers, including critical infrastructure. We are gravely concerned by the ongoing compromise of Sudan's territorial integrity, which poses a direct threat to regional stability and constitutes a flagrant violation of relevant UN Security Council resolutions and AU Peace and Security Committee. As President of the UN Security Council for this month, Sierra Leone is alarmed by this growing disregard for international law. While we acknowledge ISF detention of one of its commanders, we emphasize the importance of holding all perpetrators of war crimes, crimes against humanity accountable. As a post-conflict Sierra Leone, Sierra Leone reiterates that there is no military solution to this crisis. We support all efforts aimed at bringing lasting peace to Sudan, including the EU, the IGAD-led initiatives and the Sudan Peace Proposal of the card. Sierra Leone stands in full solidarity with the people of Sudan. Their suffering must end. The voices must guide the path to peace, and I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Nigeria.
Mr. President, Nigeria remains deeply concerned by the deteriorating humanitarian and human rights situation in Al Fashir, North Darfur, and its severe impact on civilians. Nigeria affirms the position of the AU Peace and Security, which strongly condemns the attack and atrocities of the paramilitary RSF against civilians, as well as destruction of infrastructure and obstruction of humanitarian assistance. We echo the council's call for an immediate ceasefire of hostilities, the protection of civilians, unhindered humanitarian access and an end to external interference fueling the crisis in respect of all international humanitarian and human rights law. Nigeria says that a sustainable path to peace must be Sudanese-led and Sudanese-owned, supported by yet not replacing regional and international facilitation. We underscore the importance of complementarity with the coordinated mediation effort of the EU, IGAD and the United Nations. On monitoring accountability, Nigeria encourages a constructive approach that preserves space for dialogue with the Sudanese authorities, respects Sudanese sovereignty and integrity and aligns with existing mechanisms, particularly those with an operational presence on the ground, and enjoys the concept of this government of Sudan. Finally, Nigeria reiterates its solidarity with the people of Sudan and remains committed to working with all stakeholders to support peace, stability and return to an inclusive and civilian-led process. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Slovenia.
Mr. President, Slovenia aligns with the EU statement. Al Fashir and southwestern Sudan stand as tragic examples of human rights violations and abuses committed against innocent civilians, especially women, children, persons with disabilities and older persons. The atrocities perpetrated by Rapid Support Forces demonstrate a total disregard of international humanitarian and human rights law. The attack on the Saudi maternal hospital is shocking to the core. We condemn deliberate obstruction of humanitarian access, which is deepening famine-like conditions and health crises. We call on all parties to leave sieges, open humanitarian corridors and allow safe and unhindered passage for civilians and humanitarian aid. We call on external actors to cease all actions that fuel or prolong the conflict and call on states with influence to use their leverage to bring the parties back to dialogue. Widespread impunity is a breeding ground for violence leading to war crimes and crimes against humanity, such as weaponization of starvation, rape and sexual violence and ethnically motivated killings. We urge all states to cooperate with the ICC in ensuring accountability for atrocities in Sudan. Mr. President, Slovenia calls on parties to the conflict to immediately cease hostilities in accordance with relevant United Nations Security Council resolutions and to respect international law. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Zambia.
President, Zambia is deeply concerned by the worsening humanitarian and human rights situation in and around Al Fashir. We are appalled by the growing number of civilian casualties, the destruction of civilian infrastructure and the reported attacks on humanitarian workers who risk their lives to deliver lifesaving assistance. We call on all parties to immediately cease hostilities and to ensure the full safe and unimpeded passage of humanitarian aid to affected populations. Civilians must never be targets and humanitarian actors must be protected at all times. Zambia reaffirms its support for accountability and justice for all violations of international human rights and humanitarian law. We note that the independent international fact-finding mission on Sudan already possesses a broad mandate to document atrocities and cooperate with relevant judicial mechanisms. We therefore encourage the mission to prioritize urgent reporting on the situation in Darfur within its existing framework and resources. We stress that peace, not publicity, must be the central outcome of any international initiative. Zambia further calls for continued coordination among the African Union, the Arab League and the United Nations to ensure a coherent and African-led response. In conclusion, we urge all parties and the international community to place the protection of civilians, the preservation of humanitarian space and the restoration of peace at the center of collective efforts. We express our solidarity with the Sudanese people. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Malaysia.
Mr. President, Malaysia associates itself with the statement of the OIC. Malaysia is gravely concerned over the intensifying conflict and the deteriorating humanitarian situation in Sudan's Darfur region. We are horrified by the reports of atrocities, mass killings and large-scale displacement across the country, which constitute outright violations of international law, including international humanitarian and human rights law. The abuses of human rights in Al Fashir and other conflict-affected areas, including indiscriminate attacks and the targeting of civilians and civilian infrastructure, are deeply alarming. These senseless acts of extreme violence must be stopped immediately. Malaysia calls on all parties to the conflict to cease hostility and fully comply with their obligations under international law. We further urge all parties to guarantee safe, rapid and unimpeded delivery of humanitarian assistance. Mr. President, the conflict in Sudan will never be resolved through military confrontation. All parties must engage in inclusive dialogue and return to the negotiating table to rebuild trust and to restore peace and stability in the country. Malaysia remains in solidarity with the people of Sudan and will continue to support efforts towards achieving a peaceful solution to the ongoing conflict. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Iraq. Thank you, President. Iraq wishes to express its firm condemnation of the massacres and attacks in Al Fashir and Sudan, as well as the suffering, the human suffering and the innocent victims. Iraq deplores all attempts to destabilize the Sudanese state and to attack the rule of law in that country. We warn of attacks that seek to bring political or geographic division of the country. Our country would like to express its support to Sudan, that they adopt dialogue as a solution to the conflict and to reach peace. We expose our support for this approach of dialogue, national dialogue aiming to put an end to political instability for the people of Sudan. We fear that the ongoing conflict can only bring increased victims among civilians, particularly women and children, the elderly and others that find themselves among the most vulnerable, as well as the destruction of infrastructure necessary for life of the Sudanese people, a sister nation. This exposes them to long-term damages that threaten peace and stability. We call upon the international community to support the transition process, to respect the right... their sovereignty and territorial integrity and non-interference in its domestic affairs, and to respect the choices of its people. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Malta.
Thank you, Mr President. Malta aligns itself with the statement by the EU. We deplore the severe human rights violations in El Fashir, which have exacerbated following the RSF offensive. Malta condemns all attacks on civilian populations, humanitarian personnel, and critical infrastructure. The use of sexual and gender-based violence is abhorrent and must cease immediately. Malta is particularly and deeply concerned by reports of such violence against women and girls. We underline that all parties to the conflict must abide by their obligations under international law. In this regard, we thank the High Commissioner and his office for their continued attention to this tragic situation and for the direct appeals of 27 and 31 October, reminding RSF commanders of their obligations under international humanitarian law to ensure the protection of civilians and to ensure the passage of essential supplies and humanitarian assistance. Malta's support to the fact-finding mission and special procedures and their work is maintained unreservedly. We call upon all parties to the conflict to cease all hostilities and violations of international humanitarian law and to hold perpetrators accountable for their actions. We take note of the recently signaled claim of openness to a humanitarian truce proposal put forward by quad interlocutors, and reiterate the priority for the parties to resume talks for a lasting ceasefire and a comprehensive, inclusive, and Sudanese-owned political process. Thank you, Mr President.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Republic of Moldova.
Mr President, the Republic of Moldova is deeply concerned with the ongoing conflict in Sudan and the escalation in and around El Fashir. The capture by the Rapid Support Forces of the city of El Fashir further deepened the grave situation. We are appalled by the reported violations, such as summary executions, ethnically motivated violence, sexual and gender-based violence, including against children. The famine of those trapped inside the city and attacks on humanitarian and medical personnel are of deep concern. We strongly condemn all the violations of the humanitarian law and of human rights. The conflict has already caused mass forced displacement, with over 7 million people internally displaced and over 4 million people fleeing to neighboring countries. While we welcome previous efforts aimed at resolving the conflict, we regret that a lasting political solution has not been reached yet. We call on the parties to agree on an immediate and sustainable ceasefire and ensure the peaceful resolution of the conflict, with full respect to the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Sudan. We appeal to the parties to ensure rapid and unhindered access for humanitarian aid. Accountability must be ensured for the violations committed by all the parties. In this regard, we support the mandate of the fact-finding mission and the draft resolution calling for the urgent inquiry into the recent violations. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Portugal.
Mr President, Portugal aligns with the EU statement. Portugal firmly condemns the actions taken by the Rapid Support Forces in and around El Fashir and the serious violations and abuses of human rights perpetrated against civilians. The humanitarian situation in Sudan is catastrophic. Roughly one-third of the population is displaced, with nearly 10 million internally displaced, and famine conditions have been widely verified. Reports from UN and humanitarian partners about the situation in and around El Fashir detail ethnically targeted attacks, conflict-related sexual violence, torture, summary executions, and abductions. Portugal calls upon all parties to cease hostilities, to comply with international humanitarian and human rights law, and to ensure unhindered humanitarian access, the safe and unimpeded movement of civilians fleeing El Fashir to nearby locations, as well as full protection for humanitarian and medical personnel. Respect for international humanitarian law and international human rights law is not negotiable, and accountability must be ensured. Portugal fully supports UN and regional accountability mechanisms and calls for full cooperation with them, guaranteeing access, enabling prompt information sharing, and ensuring robust protection for victims and witnesses. Portugal reiterates the need for an immediate permanent ceasefire and urges all parties to engage in inclusive, good faith, and constructive negotiations to that end. Thank you, President.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of New Zealand.
Mr President, the human rights situation in Sudan is catastrophic. New Zealand supports the convening of this special session and the ongoing work of the Sudan Fact-Finding Mission. New Zealand unequivocally condemns the continued violence against civilians, including the recent atrocities committed in El Fashir. Sudan remains the world's worst humanitarian crisis. At least 13 million people are displaced, tens, if not hundreds of thousands killed, and millions face acute food insecurity, including famine. Mass killings, large-scale sexual violence and rape, including against children, and recruitment of children by the parties constitute war crimes and crimes against humanity under international law. Reports of such acts are appalling. New Zealand continues to urge all parties to the conflict, including external actors, to negotiate an immediate ceasefire and for all parties to uphold their obligations under international humanitarian law, including the protection of civilians. Humanitarian organizations must be granted safe, rapid, and unimpeded access throughout Sudan. Human rights violations and abuses must stop. Mr President, as Secretary-General Gutierrez has said, the situation in Sudan is spiraling out of control. The international community must come together to support a negotiated humanitarian pause and a permanent ceasefire in Sudan and ensure that the human rights of the Sudanese people are upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the State of Palestine.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The State of Palestine expresses its full solidarity with the brotherly Sudanese people. Especially in light of the deep humanitarian crisis due to the escalation of armed conflict, namely in and around El Fashir, we are following with deep concern the credible reports about serious violations of international humanitarian law, international law of human rights, as well as targeting civilians and civilian infrastructure, including medical and health facilities and humanitarian facilities, which aggravates the humanitarian crisis and increases the suffering of the innocent civilians. We reiterate our steadfast position to protect and promote human rights in all conditions and an immediate and comprehensive cessation of hostilities, as well as securing humanitarian access to those who are in need of it, as well as protecting principles of neutrality, humanity, and non-discrimination in providing assistance. We call upon the international community to double efforts in order to protect civilians, to support initiatives aiming at a comprehensive political settlement that will end the suffering of the Sudanese people, preserve Sudan's unity and territorial integrity, and fulfills the aspiration of its people to live in peace, security, and stability. We reiterate our full solidarity with Sudan, and we confirm that protection of civilians and preserving human rights should be at the heart of all international response to the current crisis. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished State of Andorra.
Andorra joins the deep concern expressed by this council in the face of the human tragedy unfolding in El Fashir and throughout Dafur. Reports of ethnically motivated massacres, the systematic use of sexual violence, forced displacement, famine, and the inability of thousands of civilians to flee the city are unacceptable. No cause can ever justify the denial on the right to life, dignity, and security of civilians. Andorra is among the states that requested the convening of this special session, convinced that the situation in Sudan described by the United Nations as the world's worst humanitarian and displacement crisis required the Council's urgent and resolute attention. This initiative reflects our commitment to place diplomacy and dialogue at the service of the protection of civilians and human rights, and to ensure that indifference does not paralyze international action. We firmly condemn the atrocities committed and call on all parties to immediately cease hostilities and to respect international humanitarian law and human rights. Humanitarian access must be granted without hindrance, and the safety of humanitarian workers must be ensured. Andorra reaffirms its support for the mandate of the international fact-finding mission and stresses the need for accountability for all violations committed. There can be no lasting peace without justice. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Zimbabwe.
Mr President, Zimbabwe is appalled by the humanitarian catastrophe in El Fashir, not Dafur. We condemn the criminal activities against the Sudanese civilians and the grave violations of human rights and international humanitarian law perpetrated by the Rapid Support Forces. We also condemn all forms of external interference that continue to exacerbate the Sudanese conflict in direct violation of the EU and the UN Security Council resolutions. We stand in solidarity with the people of El Fashir, who have suffered since 2024, being denied access to food and other social basic needs, thus violating their human rights and international humanitarian law. We add our voice to the calls for the cessation of all hostilities and the opening of a humanitarian corridor to allow lifesaving aid to reach affected populations. Zimbabwe concers with the position that there is no military solution to this crisis. We support the strengthening of Sudan's political transition and urge all parties to commit to a peaceful and inclusive political process. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Mauritania.
Thank you, President. Mauritania associates itself with the statement made on behalf of the Arab Group and the International Organization of Islamic Cooperation. We would like to note the dramatic humanitarian situation and human rights situation. We condemn with the greatest strength the attacks against civilians, to include women and children, as well as the attacks on the Saudi maternity hospital. We call for those responsible for this to be brought to justice. Mauritania expresses full solidarity with the sister people of Sudan. We support the humanitarian efforts underway, and we call upon the international community to strengthen its assistance in order to ensure safe and unhindered access to humanitarian support and assistance. Mauritania reiterates its support for territorial integrity and sovereignty of Sudan. We call for an inclusive and peaceful resolution based on a Sudan-led process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Tunisia.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Tunisia expresses its deep concern regarding the deteriorating humanitarian and security situation in El Fashir. This is a direct threat to basic human rights for civilians, and this undermines all chances of reaching a political agreement and achieving peace and security in Sudan. My country expresses its continued solidarity with the brotherly people of Sudan, and we reiterate our commitment to preserving and safeguarding Sudan's integrity, sovereignty, and non-interference in its internal affairs. We are deeply committed to human rights principles, and we support the Human Rights Council principles in terms of accountability. There is a need to take decisive measures to respect the human rights of all civilians in El Fashir and all over Sudan. We consider that the current situation calls for working on an immediate ceasefire and urgent truce in order to facilitate humanitarian access to those who deserve it and fulfill the terms of the Jeddah Agreement to protect civilians. We call upon the international community, Human Rights Council, to redouble their efforts in order to find a solution to human rights violation in Sudan, as well finding an environment that is conducive for preserving the human rights and dignity of all Sudanese. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Croatia.
Thank you, Mr President. Croatia aligns itself with the EU statement. Croatia is gravely concerned about the ongoing war in Sudan and appalled by the reports of atrocities committed recently in El Fashir by the Rapid Support Forces, targeting civilians, including ethnically motivated violence and killings, conflict-related sexual violence, and starvation. We call for the immediate stop of all violations and call all parties to the conflict to respect their obligations under international humanitarian law. Equally important, we call all external actors to immediately cease their support to the warring parties and to comply with the UN embargo. Their responsibility to ending the conflict is significant. Croatia urges all parties to the conflict and international actors to engage constructively in ceasefire negotiations, enabling humanitarian access, and setting the preconditions for peace. A broad and inclusive Sudanese-owned political process, with civilian structures having central role in the process, is crucial for achieving life and peace and dignity for people of Sudan and for the future of Sudan. The fight against impunity and ensuring accountability for all violations of international law are the basis for the establishment of lasting peace. Croatia supports the work of the fact-fighting mission of Sudan and investigations carried out by the ICC in this regard. We reiterate our support to the sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to UNFPA.
Thank you, President. UNFPA is alarmed by the catastrophic humanitarian situation in and around El Fashir, which demands immediate collective action. This is a full-scale protection crisis and a gendered assault on the human rights, safety, and dignity of women and girls fueled by unashamed impunity. The use of rape is a deliberate tactic of war to displace, terrorize, and destroy entire communities. The intentional targeting of health personnel and facilities, including the massacre at the Fashir maternity hospital, has obliterated access to essential care. In many areas, post-rape treatment supplies are unavailable due to access obstructions, denying survivors lifesaving care. UNFPA continues to sustain maternal health services in North Dafur and Northern State, where there are an estimated 52,000 pregnant women, but needs are overwhelming. Reproductive health kits are prepositioned, but we need safe, unhindered access to ensure supplies reach to those in need. We urge the Council to act decisively, demanding immediate, unconditional, and safe humanitarian access, ensuring strong support for accountability mechanisms for grave violations, especially conflict-related sexual violence, and mobilizing funding for humanitarian response that places the protection of women and girls at its center. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to UNHCR.
UNHCR is deeply concerned at the horrific situation facing hundreds of thousands of civilians who remain in El Fashir, as well as those who are trying to flee the city in the face of life-threatening risks. The escalation of violence in El Fashir includes brutal attacks against civilians, including internally displaced persons. Extrajudicial killings, arbitrary detention, enforced disappearances, sexual violence, family separation, extortion and looting are taking place indiscriminately in El Fashir and as people try to flee to safety. There are no safe ways out of the city due to the presence of criminal gangs and RSF affiliates who control the routes. The scale of the horrors being reported is staggering. In North Cordofan, indiscriminate shelling and airstrikes continue alongside rampant human rights violations. Humanitarian access risks being completely blocked in Al-Baid, Kaduguli, and Dilling, preventing humanitarian actors and partners from responding to besieged populations' dire needs. The killings of humanitarian personnel in El Fashir and Cordofan flagrantly violates international law, and attacks on health facilities and destruction of water installations are depriving desperate civilians of lifesaving assistance. UNHCR adds its voice to widespread calls for an immediate ceasefire, respect for international law, safe passage, unhindered humanitarian access, and the protection of all civilians in Sudan. People displaced within the country, as well as refugees who have fled Sudan...
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Rwanda.
Mr President.
After microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr President. Rwanda thanks the Council for convening this special session and aligns itself with the Africa Group. We express our concern over the continued suffering of civilians, the destruction of livelihood, and worsening humanitarian conditions. The protection of civilians must remain paramount. Rwanda underscores the central role of the African Union and EGAID, with the support of the United Nations, the League of Arab States, and other partners in advancing coordinated international response consistent with the EU roadmap for the resolution of the Sudan crisis. Sustainable peace can only be achieved through inclusive, Africa-led dialogue and political processes that address root causes of the conflict and lay foundations for national reconciliation and stability. The government of Sudan bears the primary responsibility to protect its population from mass atrocities. from mass atrocities, while the international community must continue to support national, regional, and local efforts to prevent further violations and revert human suffering in line with the responsibility to protect principles. As I conclude, Rwanda calls for an immediate cessation of hostilities, respect for humanitarian ceasefire, and renewed commitment to peace and dialogue to bring relief and hope to the people of Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Islamic Republic of Iran expresses its profound concern over the escalating human rights and humanitarian situation in and around Al Fashir amid the ongoing conflict in Sudan. The severe famine, massive displacement, and widespread civilian suffering constitute one of the gravest humanitarian crises globally, demanding urgent attention. We deeply regret the persistent silence and lack of decisive action, which has worsened the crisis and reflects troubling double standards. Of particular concern is the continued failure to effectively prevent the transfer of arms contributing to these grave atrocities. Foreign interventions, including arms supplies and mercenary recruitment, fuel conflicts, and deepening humanitarian crises. Iran emphasizes the necessity of respecting the territorial integrity of Sudan. Iran strongly rejects any attempt to impose a situation of dual governance or to weaken the central authority of the legitimate government of Sudan. We call on all member states to act decisively, protect civilians, and support lasting peace and unity in Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Lebanon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lebanon strongly condemns the latest escalation in and around Al Fashir and the bloody events that led to serious violations of human rights and to the international humanitarian law, as well as the acts of killing, starvation, destruction, and all forms of violence and forced displacement and targeting of medical infrastructure and humanitarian teams. Lebanon joins calls for an immediate cessation of hostilities and ending the suffering on of the civilians, as well as securing humanitarian access. We reiterate the importance of accountability for all violations and crimes in order to end impunity and to achieve justice for the victims of this painful conflict. Lebanon calls for intensifying efforts at the regional and international levels to find an inclusive political solution for the crisis in Sudan through an inclusive national dialogue that will safeguard Sudan's sovereignty, security, and stability, as well as its brotherly people's dignity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Angola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Angola remains deeply concerned by the ongoing violence and the deteriorating humanitarian and human rights situation across Sudan, and especially in Al Fashir. Angola firmly condemns the atrocities committed against civilians, including attacks on hospitals and humanitarian workers. Such acts constitute grave violations of international humanitarian law and of this Council's resolutions. Angola is committed to a peaceful Africa with strong institutions in this regard. A chair of the African Union Peace and Security Council, Angola reiterates its commitment to African-led solutions, and we express our firm belief that peace can only be achieved through inclusive dialogue and negotiations supported by the United Nations, the African Union, and regional partners. The protection of civilians and humanitarian workers must remain a priority. Angola reaffirms its commitment to sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of Sudan. President Jean-Louis Lourdes, who was president pro tempore of the African Union, has made the situation of Sudan a priority and will continue to promote dialogue, reconciliation, and peace. The time has come to silence the guns and to give hope back to the Sudanese people. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative Oman.
Thank you, Mr. President. We follow with great interest the humanitarian and security developments in Al Fashir and the brotherly republic of the Sudan. We condemn the killings and violations against civilians, and we hope that the outcome of this session will help meet the aspirations of the Sudanese people and strengthening the stability and unity of the Sudan. We stress the importance of giving precedence to dialogue and peaceful solutions, ensuring the protection of civilians and facilitating unhindered humanitarian access under principles of IHL and relevant UN resolutions. We also underscore the need to respect the sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of the Sudan. We call on all parties to de-escalate on the ground and to engage meaningfully in a comprehensive political process conducive to the achievement of lasting security and stability. We support regional and international efforts to create an environment conducive to dialogue in the interest of the Sudan and its people. We call on the international community to intensify humanitarian assistance and coordinate efforts to ensure that it reaches the affected people in Al Fashir and in other affected areas to ease the suffering and to build sustainable stability. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Yemen.
Thank you, Mr. President. We join the statement of the groups we belong to. We express deep concern at the deteriorating, appalling humanitarian situation in and around Al Fashir after the takeover of the RSF of this city. And civilians face excessive violence, forced displacement, and increasing suffering due to the lack of food, water, and basic services. My country reaffirms its full solidarity with the brotherly republic of the Sudan, and we stress once again the importance of respecting sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of the Sudan, and the need to abide by the principles of IHL and protecting civilians without discrimination. We renew our support for all Arab regional and international efforts aimed at achieving security and stability in the brotherly Sudan. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of the United Republic of Tanzania.
Thank you, Mr. President. The United Republic of Tanzania aligns with the statement made on behalf of the African Group. We not with concern the recent events in Al Fashir, North Darfur, Sudan. We continue to reaffirm the enduring principles of the Charter of the United Nations, respect for sovereignty, territorial integrity, and the peaceful settlement of disputes. In this regard, we call upon all concerned parties to embrace dialogue and peaceful political process based on the EU roadmap for the resolution of the Sudan crisis and with the support of all interested partners. We further urge the international community to strengthen cooperation and provide the necessary support, including humanitarian support, to Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Italy.
Mr. President, joining the EU statement, Italy condemns in the strongest terms the appalling deterioration of the human rights and humanitarian situation in Sudan, further exacerbated following the fall of Al Fashir into the hands of the RSF militia. We are particularly alarmed by reports of widespread execution of civilians, sexual violence against women and girls, ethnically motivated violence, looting, and deliberate destruction of hospitals and other essential infrastructures. As a result of the war, the people of Sudan continue to face the world's most severe humanitarian displacement crisis. More than 10 million people have been forced to flee their homes. Over half of the population is experiencing acute food insecurity. As recalled by the Italian Deputy Prime Minister, Taliani, Italy is at the forefront of humanitarian assistance, supporting the most vulnerable civilians, starting with children, by allocating over 125 million euros to strengthen basic services and assist Sudanese communities in neighboring countries. Those most vulnerable have suffered the atrocity that may amount to war crimes and crimes against humanity. All parties must take immediate measures to safeguard civilians in full compliance with the international humanitarian human rights law. Italy calls for an immediate end to hostilities and for all parties to respect their obligation under international law, included by guaranteeing safe and unhindered access to humanitarian and health aid. We continue to stand next to the Sudanese people and support its aspiration for a peaceful and democratic future with respect for human rights and the rule of law on its core.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Libya.
Thank you, Mr. President. We join the statements of the groups we belong to, and we express grave concern and full condemnation of violations against civilians in Al Fashir, including targeting the Saudi hospital, which led to the fall of victims, and medical staff. Accountability should be ensured. We also welcome international and regional efforts to reach humanitarian truce as a first step towards a permanent ceasefire and ending this conflict. Mr. President, the Sudanese people have suffered too much, and civilians pay the price for this conflict, and we call upon the international community to redouble efforts to ensure a ceasefire and to ensure unhindered humanitarian access. My country continues to provide support to our brothers in the Sudan who came to Libya. We stress the unity of the Sudan, rejecting any interference in its internal affairs and preserving its legitimate institutions. We want to have a Lydinese-led political process with a unified government. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think I give the, I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Holy See.
See has received with great concern the tragic news coming from Sudan, particularly from the city of Al Fashir in the war-torn region of North Darfur. Just a few days ago, Pope Leo XIV recalled that indiscriminate violence against women and children, attacks on unarmed civilians, and serious obstacles to humanitarian aid are causing unbearable suffering for a population already exhausted by long months of conflict. My delegation wishes to highlight the following specific concerns. Catholic-run clinics, schools, and community centers in conflict zones have either been forced to close or are operating under extreme duress. Their staff, many of whom are volunteers, face daily threats, and many have been displaced. Catholic institutions in Sudan and neighboring countries, including South Sudan, are providing critical support to displaced families, often without formal recognition, or adequate funding. The moral voice and community reach of the local Catholic clergy and their networks are invaluable, however, it is not supported enough. In order to bring an end to the current levels of violence, Sudan requires both sustained humanitarian aid and immediate diplomatic efforts. Therefore, my delegation echoes the heartfelt appeal of Pope Leo XIV, urging all parties to consent to a ceasefire and the cessation of hostilities and urgently open humanitarian corridors. The international community must act with determination and generosity to provide assistance and support to those working tirelessly, to provide relief to the suffering population. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of South Sudan.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity. South Sudan welcomes this special session on the situation in Al Fashir and aligns with the African statement. We are concerned with the situation in Al Fashir and encourage both sides to the conflict to, one, engage in dialogue to end the crisis and suffering of civilians; two, uphold international humanitarian law and human rights law and immediate cessation of hostilities to prevent further displacement. We encourage unhindered access to humanitarian assistance. Mr. President, since peace in Sudan means peace in South Sudan, we therefore express solidarity with Sudan and urge that all efforts aimed at ending the situation in the Sudan should be done without interference but due respect to Sudan's unity, sovereignty, and territorial integrity. We thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We will now move to the list of speakers for non-governmental organizations, and I give the floor to Cairo Institute.
All of our Fashir are enduring an unspeakable horror: systematic campaign of extermination marked by ethically targeted massacres, widespread sexual violence, arbitrary detentions, and enforced disappearances following prolonged starvation, relentless extrajudicial killings, drone attacks, and shelling. Tragically similar siege are now mirrored in Al Obaid, Kaduguli, Babanusa, and Adalant, threatening the same catastrophic consequences. Rapid support forces continue to engage in large-scale looting, while armed forces carry out indiscriminate aerial bombardments and politically motivated trials. This council must act decisively. Our organizations call for an immediate comprehensive and verifiable ceasefire, safe and unhindered humanitarian access to all affected areas, and an end to all attacks on civilians and civilian infrastructure. This council must request a specific report by the Sudan Fact-Finding Mission of Al Fashir, ensure that the mission is provided adequate resources to collect and preserve evidence in support of accountability, and to communicate its findings to the ICC and other relevant bodies. Finally, RSF leaders and their regional enablers must be held accountable to their complicity in atrocities, and Sudanese victims and survivors must remain at the heart of this session's deliberations.
Thank you. I give the floor to Article 19.
Article 19 is horrified by the new wave of unspeakable atrocities in Sudan, which could amount to war crimes and crimes against humanity. We welcome the Human Rights Council taking action through this special session to help end the catastrophic suffering and ensure those responsible face accountability. Sudan cannot be allowed to become a forgotten war again. In times of conflict, journalists and media workers play a vital role in documenting and reporting on war crimes and other human rights violations and sharing lifesaving information. Yet, in Sudan, we are witnessing an onslaught on the media. At least 15 journalists have been killed since the start of the war, with reports of many others being detained or going missing. Currently, 90% of media institutions have halted their operations. The targeting of journalists constitutes a war crime. This has been exacerbated by the SAF and the RSF destroying telecommunications infrastructure and weaponizing internet shutdowns and other blackouts, further allowing atrocities to happen in darkness. These actions interrupt information flows, cut civilians off from vital communication, and impede the delivery of humanitarian aid amid growing malnutrition and starvation. Some of the last remaining sources of information have come from the RSF itself, which has been using the online networks it controls to spread praise and propaganda, broadcasting and celebrating the war crimes committed by its soldiers. We call for an immediate ceasefire and the extension of the RS embargo. We encourage the Fact-Finding Mission and the ICC to specifically consider how the information war in Sudan exacerbates harm to civilians, obstructs vital documentation of gross human rights and humanitarian law violations, and contributes to the commission of crimes. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Association for Women's Rights in Development.
Mr. President, I make this statement on behalf of the Strategic Initiative for Women in the Horn of Africa, SIHA Network. SIHA remains appalled by the Rapid Support Forces, RFS, continuing campaign of genocide, ethnic targeting of indigenous African population in North Darfur as a whole, through execution, abduction, displacement, and death. This includes the perpetration of deep systematic sexual violence against women and girls in Al Fashir. Since the fall of Al Fashir in October 26, SIHA continues to gather survivor testimonies and mounting evidence of these atrocities. As of November 7, SIHA has verified detailed cases of widespread rape committed by the RSF against women and girls fleeing Al Fashir, exposing a pattern of murder, rape, physical assault, abduction, and forced disappearance and looting. Families have been forcibly separated, with men and boys beaten, executed, or taken to nearby detention sites. Women and girls are singled out for rape and sexual violence, often in front of their own children or parents. Personal property has been confiscated or destroyed in enormous numbers. Survivors are forced to follow orders under death threats, enduring profound humiliation, torture, and extreme deprivation, with children suffering from acute hunger, thirst, and illness. This genocide is a continuation and intensification of the RFS' two-decade campaign of extermination against indigenous African communities in Darfur. We call on this council to move beyond statements, establish an independent investigative mechanism for Darfur, impose targeted sanctions, and ensure immediate humanitarian access. The world must not look away. Every moment of inaction is a choice, one that sides with the perpetrator.
Thank you. I give the floor to Matt Fafie's Development and Human Rights Association.
Thank you, Mr. President. In Al Fashir, all values are compromised, all rights violated. The criminals and those who finance and support them are well-known. The military, logistical, financial support provided by the UAE to the RSF has left behind the worst humanitarian crisis in terms of the number of massacres of civilians, the indiscriminate killing of women and children, extrajudicial executions, and the use of weapons prohibited under IHL. Mr. President, the RSF killed 460 people at once during the attack on the Saudi maternity hospital in Al Fashir. Nearly 30 women were also gang raped in a camp for the displaced people near Al Fashir University. The UAE is still establishing an open air bridge through Chad, Libya, and Somalia, through which it provides support to the RSF, including drones, heavy artillery, small and medium weapons, tankers, carriers, and mercenaries from Colombia and the Sahel region. and mercenaries from Colombia and the Sahel region. Mr. President, the war in Sudan will only stop if the UAE stops its military, logistical, and financial support for the RSF. Also imposing sanctions on those involved in transferring mercenaries to the RSF is essential. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Human Rights Watch, please.
Mr. President, we welcome this convening and thank the panelists for their stark reporting on the atrocities unfolding in and around El Fashir. Human Rights Watch has analyzed videos filmed by the RSF, showing their fighters celebrating over dead people, executing upper and civilians, including injured people. In one, an RSF soldier executes an older man in civilian clothes inside a faculty of medicine in a room already littered with bodies. The horror of the abuses in El Fashir is tragically familiar. The RSF has committed crimes against humanity and war crimes throughout the current conflict. The High Commissioner has also issued a stark warning that Cordofan could be next, and specifically reported on emerging of serious violations in the context of the RSF's capture of Barra in North Cordofan. These atrocities might have been prevented. This latest wave of atrocities should mark a turning point. Ongoing investigations by the Fact-Finding Mission are crucial to supporting accountability. We urge all states and the UN to support their work and ensure they have the necessary additional resources to conduct urgent dedicated investigations into these atrocities and identify individuals suspected of committing them. This effort should also feed into the International Criminal Court investigations. Immediate steps notably by the UN to sanction those most responsible and publicly condemn those providing military support to the RSF, including the United Arab Emirates, are key. Sudanese civilians should be centered in all discussions about responding to ongoing atrocities. Thank you.
Thank you. Amnesty International, please.
Mr. President, we welcome this special session in the context of a conflict devastating for civilians. The world has been shocked by recent events in El Fashir following the RSF attack. Videos have emerged showing RSF fighters summarily killing and committing other serious abuses against people fleeing the city. This attack was the culmination of RSF's eighteen-month siege of the city and relentless attacks that triggered famine in the displacement camps in the area. Many civilians, including children, are still trapped in the city and are facing grave danger of further attacks and abuses. The RSF has recently escalated its attacks in the Cordofan region. It seized the town of Barra, where it carried out similar killings. Recently, a drone strike reportedly killed at least forty people at a funeral outside Al Obeid. Besides encircling Al Obeid, the RSF continues to besiege the cities of Kadugli and Babanusa. In May 2024, when the RSF first started sieging El Fashir, Amnesty and others called on the international community to act urgently to prevent atrocities. Instead, some states, particularly the UAE, have continued to fuel the conflict, supplying weapons and ammunition to the RSF, while the rest watched. All states must end the supply of weapons and other military assistance to all parties to the conflict. The UN Security Council must ensure the enforcement of the arms embargo on Darfur and extend it to the rest of the country. The Human Rights Council must provide the Fact-Finding Mission with adequate resources to conduct thorough and comprehensive investigations, identify perpetrators of violence, and prepare case files for those responsible for atrocities, including in El Fashir. All international and regional actors must take concrete actions.
Thank you. ISHR, please.
Thank you, President. This is a joint statement. We welcome the convening of this special session. We urge the council to ensure urgent investigations and to adopt a resolution mandating the FFM to prepare a report to document atrocities being committed in and around El Fashir and to share information with the ICC. The FFM must be allocated all necessary resources and support required. Sudan is witnessing grave human rights violations following RSF's capture of El Fashir and Barra: mass killings, ethnic targeting, deliberate attacks on civilians, forced starvation, and widespread sexual and gender-based violence. Civilians attempting to flee have been shot, humanitarian workers killed, and entire families wiped out, particularly in El Fashir, North Darfur, Barra, and North Cordofan. The situation has triggered a deepening humanitarian catastrophe. Civilians are facing starvation, mass displacement, and total communications blackouts, with women and children bearing the heaviest burden. Humanitarian access remains nearly impossible, and aid funding is critically low. Sudanese women defenders face intimidation and high risk of reprisals inside and outside of Sudan, impeding them from publicly engaging with this council. All parties to the conflict must respect international humanitarian law and ensure the safety of civilians, especially women and children. States must demand unimpeded humanitarian access and ensure that it reaches those in need. We call on states to urge the warring parties to ensure an immediate ceasefire allows for safe passage of civilians and humanitarian workers and protection of civilians. Thank you.
Thank you. United Network for the Development of Mauritania. Thank you, sir. The United Network for Development in Mauritania has seen indiscriminate bombing hitting residential areas, leading to mass displacement of people, and targeting camps for internally displaced people. Those camps host vulnerable people who already, for more than five hundred days, have been subjected to an inhuman siege imposed upon them by an armed militia supported by the United Arab Emirates. Since the very beginning of taking over El Fashir, the Rapid Support Forces militia has killed seven hundred civilians, subjected approximately three thousand to forced disappearance, and we still don't know where they are, and executed civilians, the bodies of whom, according to satellite images, are still lying unattended in the streets. The militia also tortured other people, allegedly for trying to bring assistance and aid into the country in a clandestine manner. Sir, lastly, we would like to call upon the member states of the council to urge the United Arab Emirates to stop providing arms to the Rapid Support Force, to stop supplying mercenaries to them, to stop supplying munitions to them. Providing justice to the people of Sudan and offering them compensation for what's been done to them is the last opportunity we have to rebuild trust in the international human rights system. Thank you. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you. Horrific audio files are emerging from El Fashir detailing racially motivated attacks, summary executions, mass graves, and sexual violence. All this threatens to take more areas imminently by the hand of the RSF. Those responsible continue to act with impunity as they brazenly record themselves committing possible war crimes and crimes against humanity. We are deeply disturbed by the number of RSF fighters who appear to be children. The absence of meaningful military or humanitarian assistance for the people of El Fashir during the eighteen-month siege is deeply regrettable. We all knew that there will be repetition of the atrocities of 2003, yet no one protected the civilians. A ceasefire and cessation of all attacks on civilian areas is the first step. We need to hold all people responsible for those crimes accountable. We call for full implementation of arms embargoes and targeted sanctions on those found to be facilitating and fueling the atrocities across Sudan, including the UAE. At the end, we urge the council to fully resource and support the FFM in producing a flash report, also to assess the role of external factors and share relevant information with the ICC to inform its investigation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. International Federation for Human Rights Leaks, please.
PH and its Sudanese member organizations welcome this special session to address the catastrophic situation in and around El Fashir. Reports from the city, including photo and video evidence shared by RSF members themselves, detail the RSF's systematic campaign of ethnically-motivated atrocities, including mass killings, torture, rape, and targeted attacks against civilians fleeing the city. These same atrocities risk being repeated in Cordofan's besieged towns in Al Obeid, Kadugli, Babanusa, and Adalange, where the RSF blockades, drone strikes, and shelling are killing civilians, whilst SAF reportedly prevents civilians from leaving Al Obeid. Continued inaction by the international community will only enable further violations. Just as we have seen, the lack of accountability for earlier crimes has now created the conditions for the current atrocities in El Fashir. Independent accountability efforts, such as those of the FFM, are crucial to counter this pervasive impunity. The council must provide the FFM with adequate resources to urgently investigate and report on violations in El Fashir before evidence is lost or destroyed. Their findings cannot just remain in a report, but must then be acted on by the international community, including by expediting existing ICC investigations and advancing inquiries into crimes in El Fashir, expanding the UN arms embargo and enforcing with stronger monitoring, including transparent investigations into supply channels linked to the UAE and other countries providing arms to the warring parties, targeted sanctions against those perpetrating and enabling violations, and increased support for Sudanese civil society in their work documenting violations and supporting victims. Thank you.
Thank you. Legal Action Network, please.
Happening in El Fashir, the surrounding areas in North Darfur and beyond, is not new. It is the outcome of decades of gross impunity. Every moment of inaction, every platitude uttered, is a choice to condone and even encourage that impunity. It is a choice that sides with the perpetrators of this sickening violence. Many survivors from Darfur have testified to us. Let us listen to them. "When the city fell, everything became death: the houses, the streets, even the hospitals. I saw them line up men from the Zagawa tribe and shoot them. They beat us, insulted us, and took girls away in cars. We walked for hours among the dead, stepping over bodies of people we knew. They shouted, 'You are Zagara, aren't you? They raped me.' In front of me, they killed a woman. They said, 'Either we rape you or we take your daughter.' I said, 'Rape me, but leave my daughter.' So they beat me and raped me." We have hundreds more of these testimonies. They confirm that these acts are neither random nor isolated. They reflect a coordinated, consistent pattern by members of the RSF, clearly constituting war crimes, crimes against humanity, and genocide. Members of this council, how will you ensure that all states and private actors immediately cease all forms of material support, supply of arms that fuel the atrocities committed by RSF in El Fashir and across Darfur, or face accountability for...
Thank you, sir. Once they took over El Fashir, the militia of the Rapid Support Force started to commit massacres which were ethnically motivated. They killed two thousand people during the first week after they entered the city. Despite the fact that they did accept a humanitarian truce proposed on the 6th of November, they continued to carry out attacks against IDP camps in El Fashir, attacking particularly women, subjecting them to sexual violence and using collective rape and other atrocities as a weapon of war. A few days after they took El Fashir, the militiamen burnt the bodies of civilians to hide the evidence of their crimes and then celebrated their victory with the remains of the victims in the background. Sir, the Elisca relief foundation would like to emphasize that these appalling attacks against civilians in El Fashir will not stop until the members of this council and observer states exert all possible pressure on the UAE to stop financing the militia and stop providing it with military support. We urge the establishment of investigative missions which can get to El Fashir to meet the survivors and the families of the victims. And we urge this council to dissuade all other neighboring countries, including Chad, and particularly Chad, to become complicit in the conflict in Sudan by providing Emirati arms to the RSF. Thank you. Thank you. Geneva Institute for Human Rights, please. Thank you very much. I am addressing you today on behalf of the Geneva Institute for Human Rights to express our support for the holding of this special session at what is a crucial moment in the armed conflict in Sudan. Sir, this year we're celebrating thirty years of the right to protection. What has happened in El Fashir is a demonstration of how the international community has to prove its credibility in fully implementing that principle. We urge the council to start by strongly condemning the flagrant violations of international human rights law and international humanitarian law committed by the Rapid Support Forces in El Fashir and elsewhere. Secondly, we demand an independent international mission of inquiry in Sudan and an urgent report being submitted as soon as possible by it to this council. Thirdly, we urge the UNGA to forward the investigation report when completed to the Security Council so that that body can take whatever measures are necessary. And we would further like to see the mandate of the International Court of Justice expanded to cover the whole of the Sudan. Lastly, we think that silence from this council would be tantamount. Thank you. Thank you very much. International Alliance for Defensive Rights and Freedoms.
It is my honor to deliver this statement on behalf of the Alliance International for Law Defense to us at the Libertas Idol and the Global Center for the Responsibility to Protect. More than twenty years ago, the world witnessed the horrors of the Darfur genocide. Today, the fall of El Fashir has sparked another wave of devastation and atrocity crimes. The city's capture has unleashed attacks against civilians with credible reports that the RSF has killed, raped, abducted, and tortured civilians, frequently targeting them based on ethnic identity. Satellite imaginary and the survivor testimonies indicate door-to-door executions and the deliberate destruction of civilian infrastructure. These crimes may amount to war crimes, crimes against humanity and/or acts of genocide. Today's reality underscores the urgent need for decisive international action to protect vulnerable populations. We commend the Human Rights Council We commend the Human Rights Council for convening today's special session at such a critical moment, and thank defenders for their vital role in mobilizing civil society. We call the Human Rights Council to support the resolution before you and request a firefighting mission to investigate violations in and around Al Fashir, including the role of external actors, and provide actionable recommendations. Every government and the institution has the responsibility to protect. We call upon the member states...
Thank you. Next speaker, International Institute for Rights and Development.
Sir President, as RSF fighters shoot civilians on air, rape women publicly, and as people survive famine by eating leaves, the world still glorifies the UAE as a global hub. It is not only reason we have lost, perhaps it's our humanity. A satellite image continues to show bloodstained land and scattered bodies, what UN experts call a Rwanda-level genocide and unmatched barbarity. Emirati support for the RSF has been documented through networks across Libya, Chad, Uganda, and Somalia. Leaked UN documents revealed Emirati passports on an RSF-linked crashed plane, while Amnesty Trust Emirati transfers of Chinese weapons into Darfur. UN experts tracked radar-eviding Emirati flights landing in Chad, forming a regional air breach. Middle East Eye reported the Emirati use of Besasso Airport to transit Colombian mercenaries and over 500,000 containers marked as hazardous to Sudan. Mr. President, there is a clear link between RSF-controlled zones and resource-rich areas, especially gold mines vital to the UAE. $13 billion worth of Sudan gold is smuggled to the Emirates. Hamdettis Network and family company facilitate this trade, with the UAE-based brother overseeing operations, and Hamdetti wealth reaching $7 billion in 2023.
Thank you. Africa Culture Internationale. Monsieur le président. Thank you, sir. Women and children are the victims of systematic sexual violence committed by members of the RSF and its allies in Sudan. They are being kidnapped and subject to forced detention in Darfur, in Khartoum, and in other areas. Children are being recruited by force into fighting militias. And the report from the United Nations Secretary General on children in armed conflict is documented. The practice is being used for that. Human Rights Watch has confirmed the forced recruitment of children in Jibril Mara and in Darfur. The war reached by the Sudanese Armed Forces has displaced over 14,000 people by force, and as a result of military blockades, the destruction of schools and hospitals has followed, as Al Jazeera and others have documented war crimes are being committed. The armed forces of Sudan and the Sudanese liberation movement also continue to place obstacles in the way of delivery of aid and targets international aid depots in flagrant violation of international humanitarian law. The continuation of these crimes by the Sudanese Armed Forces and allied militia means that we have to speak out, condemn what's happening, and ensure effective protection of civilians. Thank you. Thank you. Partners for Transparency is next. Thank you, sir. Our organization would like to put on record its enormous concern about the flagrant human rights violations committed in the city of Al Fashir by the RSF. Since the end of October, we've seen extrudicial executions, torture, forced disappearances, and the bombing of civilian areas and residential districts, as well as the displacement of 70-odd thousand people. All this is a flagrant violation of the basic right to life. The delivery of humanitarian aid is being impeded, and the RSF is even attacking shelters. We know they've carried out sexual atrocities, including gang rape. Many people were killed in the Saudi maternity hospital when it was attacked by the RSF on the 20th of October. At least 25 women and girls have been subjected to collective rapes in the shelters around the University of Al Fashir. We demand strongest possible condemnation of all these abuses and atrocities, and demand the establishment of an independent international mission to investigate what has been done in Al Fashir, and to consider the involvement of the United Arab Emirates in the provision of militia and munitions and arms to the RSF through Libya. Thank you.
Interfaith International.
Thank you. Interfaith International.
Faith International expresses its deep concern over the escalating violence and the grave human rights violations in and around Al Fashir. The destruction of places of worship, including mosques and churches, the targeting of civilians, and the spread of extremism and hate-based narratives are deeply alarming. Acts of racial and ethnic discrimination must end immediately. We call on parties to respect the ceasefire and to open safe corridors for humanitarian access to civilians in need. The ongoing destruction of infrastructure, hospitals, residential areas, as well as reports of rape and indiscriminating bombing constitute war crimes and crimes against humanity. Those responsible must be held accountable. Our organization firmly believes there is no military solution to the Sudan crisis. We support diplomatic and political negotiations aimed at achieving a sustainable civilian-led transition that can build democratic institutions and end the culture of impunity. We thank the council for convening this special session and urge the international community to act decisively to protect civilians and to support efforts for peace, justice, reconciliation in Sudan. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you. African Center for Democracy and Human Rights Studies, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The African Center condemns atrocities committed in Al Fashir since its fall to the RSF after 18 months' deadly siege, where beleaguered residents were forced to eat animal food to survive. Any aggression against civilians and non-compartents alike is a crime abhorrent to Islamic faith and all canons of civilized life, and the perpetrators must be brought to justice. In this regard, we note the arrest of an RSF field commander. However, the magnitude of the atrocities commands more action to hold those responsible accountable. We draw attention of the council to the ethnic cleansing currently taking place in Khartoum, where the security forces randomly arrest and summarily execute innocent civilians because of their ethnic or regional origins. A campaign of forced evictions and selective demolition of whole residential areas inhabited by displaced people mainly from Darfur and Kourouf is taking place in the environs of Khartoum, and thousands of victims of this inhuman campaign, including whole families, are left without shelter. The army's rejection of all attempts to end the armed conflict through negotiated settlement is aggravating the humanitarian situation. Such intransigence is behind the failure of the indirect talk held in Washington, DC last month. It is our belief that what happened in Al Fashir was preventable had the army agreed to assist fair arrangement for humanitarian purpose during the Washington talks.
Merci. Shaddan Apola, Al-Gora.
Thank you. Al-Gora Community Development Association, please.
President, Al-Gora Community Development Association expresses its deepest concern and strong condemnation of the horrific violations being committed against civilians in Al Fashir, the capital of North Darfur. The ongoing killings, chilling, and starvation together with the denial of medical and humanitarian access represent grave breaches of international humanitarian and human rights law. We call upon Sudanese leaders and the international community to act urgently to end these atrocities, protect civilians, and ensure safe and unhindered humanitarian access. Reason and inanity must prevail to stop the bloodshed and preserve Sudan's national cohesion and dignity. We urge this council and the international community to uphold their moral and legal responsibilities to stop the violations and deliver immediate humanitarian relief to the people of Sudan. Thank you.
Thank you. Encontre Africaine pour la défense des droits de l'homme, please.
Monsieur le président.
Thank you, sir. 22 years after the genocide in Darfur, the international community is still sitting on its hands watching a new cycle of ethnic cleansing in Sudan. Carpet bombing, destruction of hospital infrastructure, of aid stocks, extrudicial executions, and depriving people of aid through humanitarian corridors are war crimes as far as we're concerned and crimes against humanity. We demand technical and financial support to the International Commission of Inquiry so that it can fully discharge its mandate. We also demand that all the belligerents involved in these human rights and human rights international law violations appear before international courts. We urge the creation of a sustainable ceasefire and a political and diplomatic solution to this conflict. This is the only way of ensuring real credible protection for civilians and helping the Sudanese people to realize their dreams. We urge all the parties in the conflict to protect civilians in line with international human rights law and international humanitarian law and in line with the relevant UN resolutions. We reiterate our support and solidarity with the Sudanese people. Thank you. Thank you. Forum for Development and Human Rights Dialogue.
Distinguished delegates, our organization, which is based in Egypt, would like to express its deep concern over the continuous deterioration of the humanitarian and security situation in Sudan since the outbreak of the armed conflict in April 2023. This has caused increasing suffering among the civilians and poses a serious threat to the stability and unity of the state. We reaffirm our support for the sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of the Republic of Sudan, including the importance of preserving the state's legitimate institutions. They are the main safeguard for protecting citizens and maintaining public order and stability. We urge all parties to fully comply with the international humanitarian law and ensure the protection of civilians and vital infrastructure. We strongly condemn all grave human rights violations and war crimes committed against civilians in Darfur and other regions. We stress the need for accountability and an end to impunity for all perpetrators. We also call upon regional and international actors that provide the forms of support or political cover to armed groups operating outside the frame of the state, including the RSF, to seize all actions that undermine stability and peace within Sudan. And we call upon them to respect the international legitimacy and principles of Sudan's unity and sovereignty, and thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is the Mauna Association for Human Rights and Immigration.
Thank you. We express our profound alarm regarding the catastrophic and escalating crisis in Sudan. Credible reports confirm widespread systemic mass atrocities and grave violation of international law. We condemn the indiscriminate attack on civilians and civilian objectives. These actions violate the principle of distinction, proportionality, and the duty to take all feasible measures to minimize harms to civilians. We cite alarming reports of extrajudicial killing, forced displacement, and systemic use of conflict-related sexual violence, actors which may constitute war crimes and crimes against humanity. We are also concerned by reports regarding the alleged involvement of external actors in providing support to the parties engaged in hostilities. These actions prolong the violence, violate international norms, and render external actors complicit in the atrocities. We demand an immediate cessation of hostilities and robust protection for civilians. The deep-rooted impunity must be broken by ensuring all perpetrators are held accountable through credible, independent mechanisms. We urge full cooperation with the UN Fact-Finding Missions to secure the full realization of human rights for all affected people. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last statement that we can accommodate. I've been informed that some delegations have requested the possibility of exercising their right to reply, and I start by giving the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Arab Emirates. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. My country has asked for the right to reply as a representative that is a concerned party. The Sudanese Armed Forces are trying to get back all possible venues in order to forget about the violations that you have wrongly accused us of doing, instead of putting an end to the war that has been ignited. Now, all the campaigns are being launched in order to distort our image, and this is an attempt to put an obstacle to all these efforts. We would like to say that all reports have been documenting the violations of human rights and the international humanitarian law by the Sudanese Armed Forces. The Sudanese Armed Forces have turned down peace despite of the major efforts played by the Quad and the United States. With the support of our country, this would have prevented the latest escalation in Al Fashir region and would have allowed access to humanitarian aid. The United Arab Emirates would support all the calls that call for an immediate ceasefire, and we call upon all parties to the conflict to respect their humanitarian and legal obligations and put the interests of the Sudanese people first, because the people are the ones that pay the price of this atrocious and absurd war. The United Arab Emirates would like to reiterate its commitment to collaborating with its international and regional partners, including the Quad, in order to launch a transitional process that will pave the way for the establishment of an independent government that will not be under the control of warring parties. Mr. President, those who are pretending that they have helped build the glory of other countries, they have to look at what they are doing, and they have to consecrate their efforts to building their country instead of perpetrating lies. At the end, the nations are not built upon destruction, they are built based on peace and dialogue. We shall not forget that the Port Sudan Authority is a party that is trying to get the sympathy of the world, but it is the same party that has made atrocities in Darfur 20 years ago, and it has also taken the power over the authorities that were elected in 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The distinguished representative of Chad.
Merci.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Chairman, we firmly reject the allegations made against us by some non-governmental organizations which have suggested that we are making it easier to deliver weaponry into Sudan. Chad has a border with Sudan, which is 1,300 kilometers long, and that means that we are also suffering from the consequences of the armed conflict in that country. We've got security problems, financial issues, economic problems, enormous, all of them being exacerbated by this. Hundreds of thousands of Sudanese refugees, and we think the total at the moment is now over a million, have fled into Chad. They've settled in our country, and the numbers are growing by the day, literally by the day. We were already facing massive humanitarian challenges, now we have another one. Our people show exemplary solidarity and hospitality in welcoming the Sudanese cousins into Chad, but that is being seriously tested, and we need international cooperation and solidarity if we're going to actually be able to meet properly what is a very heavy responsibility. Crisis situations in our neighbors mean that we are a subsidiary victim of those conflicts. We are under considerable pressure in humanitarian terms because of this. We want to see a negotiated political solution to this conflict to be reached by all Sudanese working together. Dialogue is what we want to see, to bring that about, and we will be only too happy to cooperate with all the Human Rights Council mechanisms in existence if it will help to improve the human rights situation in Sudan and protect civilians, and help to deal with all the other issues we need to tackle if we're going to have full respect for international human rights and international humanitarian law. In conclusion, Chad is not, I repeat, not involved in any of the actions, accusations of which have been levered against us. We are neutral in terms of the conflict in Sudan, and we want to have peace talks to bring that conflict to an end. We have to see a renewal of negotiations to move towards a lasting ceasefire and, above all, a lasting political settlement, because we're not going to have peace in Sudan unless we do that. And without peace in Sudan, Chad's under threat as well. Thank you. Thank you. I see no further requests for the floor. In that case, Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we should take a very, very brief technical break before we examine the draft resolution. Thank you. Thank you.
Your Excellencies, distinguished colleagues, we will follow the usual procedure as was the case in previous sessions of the Human Rights Council. I would like to recall the key points. The voting process is only possible for member states of the council. Observer states will only be able to intervene in two cases: when they introduce a draft resolution or decision or when they are directly concerned by that draft resolution or decision. Aside from those situations, observer states will not be able to take the floor even on a point of order. All procedural motions such as amendments must be announced during the general comments segment. If a procedural motion is raised once the vote has begun, it will considered to be inadmissible. I'd also like to recall that in line with Article 128 of the General Assembly Rules of Procedure, the author of a proposal or an amendment will not be able to explain its vote on the proposal or amendment. And lastly, may I recall that during the vote, the speaking time is limited to three minutes. We will now proceed with the consideration of the draft resolution. This is Resolution A/ HRC/ S38L1 entitled ‘The Human Rights Situation in and Around Al Fashr in the Context of the Ongoing Conflict in the Sudan’. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom to introduce the draft resolution. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I deliver this statement on behalf of the Sudan Core Group consisting of Germany, Ireland, the Netherlands, Norway and the United Kingdom. We requested this session because the scale and severity of the crisis in Sudan can no longer be met with silence. The situation in Al Fashr is the latest example of a broader collapse, a collapse of the rule of law, protection of civilians and human dignity. As we have heard from so many speakers today, what we are witnessing is not just a humanitarian emergency but a systematic assault on civilians with consequences that extend far beyond Sudan's borders. The violence in Al Fashr bears the hallmarks of a coordinated campaign against civilians by the Rapid Support Forces. Their advance has been accompanied by credible reports of ethnically targeted killings, systematic sexual violence and the deliberate use of starvation. Across Sudan, over 30 million people now require humanitarian assistance and yet access to aid is obstructed and those who try to help are themselves at risk as we have seen with the appalling targeting of health workers in Al Fashr. The scale of need is staggering but the response has been inadequate. This council must not look away. I hope we could all agree on the need for accountability as well as the end goal of reconciliation. We need an independent account of the past to achieve both these goals. There is no other independent mechanism to achieve that goal. The key outcome of this resolution is the urgent inquiry to be carried out by the UN Fact-Finding Mission. Its efforts to document and preserve evidence of violations, abuses lay the groundwork for justice. Without it, accountability will remain out of reach and the cycle of impunity will continue. We also pay tribute to the Sudanese civil society actors who continue to serve their communities under extraordinary pressure. Their courage and resilience are a reminder of the values this council is meant to uphold. Mr. President, the strongest tribute that we can all make to their courage is by adopting today's resolution by consensus. Let us send a clear signal that the people of Sudan are not forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Secretariat has informed me that there are 30 additional cosponsors to the draft resolution. I now go the floor to the members of the council who wish to make general comments on the draft resolution as presented. Are there any requests for the floor? I see none. I've also been told that Sudan will not take the floor at this point in time as a concerned country. Is that the case? The Secretariat has informed me that this will have a bearing on the programme and budget as presented and I give the floor to the representative of the secretariat. We will now take action on Draft Resolution A/ HRC/ S38L1 as presented and I give the floor to members of the council who wish to explain their vote before the vote. I call upon the distinguished representative of Sudan. Thank you, President. Sir, we wish to express our thanks to all states and all organisations who have condemned the actions carried out by the terrorist militia and the states sponsoring it, that is the UAE. We would like to extend our thanks to countries who have worked with us to amend the draft resolution during consultations pertaining to this text. We also thank those who drafted this draft resolution because they've taken into consideration our observations. We also wish to thank the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights for the work in documenting these atrocities. As regards the draft resolution, some paragraphs are positive and warrant acceptance and we would mention, for instance, paragraphs that condemn the activities carried out by the militia and extrajudicial executions, arbitrary detention of civilians and the recruitment of children as well as rape as weapons of war and other forms of violence. We very much appreciate the paragraphs that have restated this council's commitment to respect the sovereignty of Sudan, its territorial integrity as well. We are in agreement with the paragraph which refuses to introduce a parallel force or authority in zones and areas that are controlled by the support forces. We will not go against this draft text, however, we reject a number of paragraphs and we would like this to be reflected in the records of this session. I'll start out by the preamble and I'll look at paragraphs 11 and 12 of the preamble. Paragraph 11 talks about the fact-finding mission and paragraph 13 talks about the states who support the militia without naming the state. You have seen the position of the international community. There have been demonstrations throughout the world condemning the United Arab Emirates. We have seen all of this even in the parliaments and public spaces to condemn the United Arab Emirates. I'd now like to turn to the paragraph 14, 15, 16, 17. All of these paragraphs relate to the fact-finding mission. Our stance as regards this mission and the resolution which has established this mission is very clear-cut. Once again, we feel that these paragraphs that we are rejecting should be mentioned in the records of this session.
Bassem, you have three minutes. Please come to the end of your statement.
Thank you very much indeed, President. As regards the humanitarian situation as mentioned in the draft resolution, we would like to thank those who have mentioned the causes for this humanitarian situation. The states sponsoring militia should be reminded that you take responsibility for the blood shed in Sudan. Demonstrations across the world have condemned this and that we believe is sufficient. We would like to see that the international community will condemn you and bring you to justice. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Colombia.
Thank you, sir. Assistance between human beings is what has given us power as mankind. Recently, during the meeting in Cairo, our President Gustavo Perez has expressed Colombia's solidarity and announced the sending of humanitarian aid through a body to address two genocides that are unfolding across the world in Gaza and Sudan. Colombia has supported the convening of this special session of the Human Rights Council because of our consternation at the atrocities committed by the Rapid Support Forces in Al Fashr and in the regions of Darfur and Cordofan with the participation of foreign mercenaries, participation that we have rejected in several sessions and panels of this council. It is relevant to point out that in the draft resolution, reference is made to these atrocities including the assassination of civilians, women, young girls and boys as well as indiscriminate attacks on civil infrastructure or the assassination of humanitarian and medical staff. At this special session, we would like to restate that Colombia stands beside the victims and that our message is one of peace and respect for human rights and international humanitarian law. That is why we will vote in favour of the draft resolution if there is a call for a vote. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I call upon the distinguished representative of China.
Mr. President, China firmly supports Sudan's sovereignty, unity and territorial integrity. We also support the efforts made by the government in promoting political process and safeguard national security. We also support Sudan to find their own ways that fits their national circumstances and people's needs to resolve the situation. We reject any imposed external solutions or country-specific human rights mechanisms. China has noted that the draft resolution condemns violations of international humanitarian law and violation of human rights in and around Al Fashr, calls for immediate and complete ceasefire and adopt action to release humanitarian situation, protect human rights. However, the draft resolution is not balanced in content and does not take into consideration of the concerns of related country. It has mentioned and also expanded the mandate of the fact-finding mission. Based on the, given the above and underpinned by our principle, China constructively participates in the consultation of the resolution. We have requested a more balanced text and in this regard, China will not join the consensus on this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Microphone for China.
I would like to repeat, China will not join the consensus on the paragraph on fact-finding mission in the draft resolution. China will disassociate on relevant paragraphs on fact-finding missions in the resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I call upon the distinguished representative of Kuwait.
Thank you, President. President, we would like to express our thanks to the groups who have drafted this draft resolution and for the consultations that have taken place. This draft contains important paragraphs which reflect the humanitarian situation in Al Fashr. This text condemns the actions of the Rapid Support Forces and we do hope that this draft resolution will alleviate the suffering of victims. We welcome the fact that Sudan has joined the consensus. We condemn the flagrant and grave attacks conducted by the Rapid Support Forces in Al Fashr and in the surrounding areas. We restate the importance of providing humanitarian assistance and the importance to uphold international humanitarian law. By way of conclusion, our position is very clear: we need to put an immediate end to the violence and ensure that dialogue prevails so as to achieve peace and stability in Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I call upon the distinguished representative of Qatar. I call upon the distinguished representative of Qatar.
Thank you, President. It is an honor for me to take the floor to make a number of comments on the draft resolution. I would like to thank the groups who have facilitated consultations on this text. We very clearly condemn any violation and all crimes perpetrated by the Rapid Support Forces in El Fasher. There must be an investigation. There will have to be an independent follow-up as regards what happened so as to bring the perpetrators to justice. Such atrocities must be prevented in future. The core group has taken account of several comments and remarks made during informal consultations so as to achieve a text which garners consensus. We note the role of the Office of the High Commissioner in Sudan so as to inform the Council about what is happening in El Fasher. We know that the Sudanese government collaborates with the OHCHR in Sudan. This will enable the officials of the Office to reach out to the areas where the victims are and to glean firsthand information. We very much welcome Sudan's collaboration on this text and we hope that we will be able to reach a consensus so as to improve the human rights situation in Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call upon the distinguished representative of Ethiopia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ethiopia joins consensus on this resolution in light of the gravity of the humanitarian and human rights situation in and around El Fasher and out of solidarity with the people of Sudan. At the same time, Ethiopia wishes to formally disassociate itself with operative paragraphs 14, 15, and 16, as well as all other references to the fact-finding mission. Ethiopia has consistently maintained that creating or expanding international investigative mechanisms without the consent of the country concerned is neither constructive nor conducive to a sustainable solution. We continue to hold the view that the African Union and IGAD remain the central and legitimate actors in supporting Sudan towards peace, dialogue, and accountability. We request that the statement be reflected in the records of the session of the Council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ghana, please.
Mr. President, Ghana maintains that finding agreement on recommendations for setting up institutions or expanding the mandates of existing mechanisms are a central pillar of the human rights architecture and a necessary condition for safeguarding the utility, relevance, and value of the Human Rights Council. Ghana acknowledges the genuine concerns of the Sudanese authorities and believes that those concerns are valid. However, having closely followed the recent happenings in El Fasher, Ghana is of the considered opinion that the Council needs to evolve a new approach on Sudan that narrows the scope of divergence in a constructive, fair, and impartial manner. We wish to stress the importance of accepting the principles, modalities, and mechanisms of the international human rights system, which, in this particular situation, are not mutually exclusive. We remain convinced that in situations of systemic, widespread, and awful human rights violations or abuses, the international community must exercise its duty in a fair and impartial manner to assist the country concerned to protect its citizens. Mr. President, we must use all the existing mechanisms on the Sudan to address the human rights situation in the country gathered by the principle of complementarity. At this crucial time, a unified voice of the Council in support of accountability measures is necessary to send a strong message toward the perpetrators of atrocity crimes that their actions will not go unpunished. It is for these reasons that Ghana will join consensus. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ghana. Is there a request for a vote? I don't see one. May I take it then that the draft proposal S38/1 as presented can be adopted without a vote? It is so decided, thank you. You will find the information on the implication for the Programme Budget on the extranet. With that, I'm going to move to explanations of vote and general comments after the vote on the text which has just been adopted. Is there any delegation seeking the floor? Distinguished representative of Sudan, please. Thank you very much, sir. We said clearly that we reject certain paragraphs of the draft resolution. And that is an opinion also shared by several fraternal countries for whose support we are grateful. Let me recall one or two essential points, however. On the humanitarian situation in Sudan, let me remind you of the situation there. We are always trying to get humanitarian aid in quickly and distribute it to every region of Sudan, including those which are at the moment under the control of terrorist militias. A Sudanese is a Sudanese. All parts of Sudan are Sudan. On justice and impunity of those who have perpetrated human rights violations, we operate the complementarity principle and on the basis of it we cooperate with all human rights mechanisms. We shall continue to cooperate and coordinate with them. And that starts with the Regional Human Rights Office and all the subsidiary bodies thereof and each and every party working to restore human rights in Sudan. We also cooperate with the Security Council experts in accordance with Resolution 1591. We have national mechanisms in every region in the country who are working on human rights issues and to cooperate as part of that with the relevant international organizations dealing with justice for victims of violations and the problem of impunity for those who perpetrate them. Thank you. Thank you very much. I call on the distinguished delegation of Cuba. Thank you very much, sir. The Cuban delegation has joined the consensus on the understanding that this resolution has the support of the state concerned. Nonetheless, and having said that, we regret that attempts are being made to use this situation to legitimize and expand the mandate of what we believe is a biased investigative mechanism, the creation of which Cuba did not support. This is part of efforts to politicize and manipulate this Human Rights Council rather than using it for a discussion body, the purpose of which is to seek balanced, reasonable agreements which make it possible to fully protect everybody's human rights. Because of this and taking into account our position of principle on all the paragraphs in the resolution related to the investigative or fact-finding mission on those, Cuba disassociates from the consensus. Thank you. Thank you very much, Cuba. That exhausts the list of speakers for explanations of vote and general comments after the vote and concludes action on the draft resolution. Your Excellencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to an end of this special session. Before I declare the session closed, I should like to remind you that the report of the 38th Special Session is currently in the process of being finalized and it will soon be available on the Council extranet. May I also take the opportunity to remind you that delegations will have the possibility of submitting their comments over the next two weeks once the report has been distributed to the secretariat of the Council. May I take it that the Council decides to adopt the draft report of the 38th Special Session of the Human Rights Council at referendum? I see no objections. So decided, thank you. Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Thank you to the interpretation team whose flexibility made it possible for us to conclude this special session this morning. And I declare the 38th Special Session of the UN Human Rights Council closed. Thank you.